There we go, let's put the microphone on, let's try that again. Good morning, everyone. All right, City Council signed in. I'd like to call the January 18th, 2012, meeting of the Las Vegas City Council to order. Again, I would like to excuse Mayor Goodman, who is out of town on city business. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 under closed caption for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note, some customers of Cos Communication do not have a cable box and can view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting, at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or at the front of the chamber. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking on public comment, citizen participation, or specific public hearing items. Before we proceed with the agenda, would you please rise for the invocation given this morning by Pastor Cos Kalichi Evangelical Friends Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good morning, City Council members. Nice to see you again. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gathering of our leaders and citizens of this city. I ask you that you anoint them with the Holy Spirit today, that love and compassion and pursuit of justice would be their guiding light. Anoint them with the wisdom that the decision our City Council members take today would benefit the citizens of this city, especially those who are facing unemployment and economic difficulties. As Psalm says, "The Lord has done it this very day. Let us rejoice today and be glad." Amen.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Have a nice crowd out there. Thanks for coming to our City Council meeting, and this is our ceremonial items for this morning, where we have a lot of fun recognizing some great people and organizations in our city. First, I'd like to recognize our Employee of the Month. Like to ask our Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services Director Steve Harson to join us at the podium. Steve, would you come up here, please? And I am proud to announce that the January Employee of the Month is Rob Lavrant. Rob, would you please come up? Congratulations, Rob. Rob is a Neighborhood Outreach Specialist and has been a city employee since 2005. Rob is the primary neighborhood planner for Ward 3 and was nominated for this award by Councilman Coffin. In the absence of a special assistant for Councilman Coffin during his first six months on the council, Rob has been invaluable in responding to all types of constituent questions, concerns, and complaints. He has demonstrated the highest level of customer service while using his knowledge and experience to assist the councilmen in responding to comments and concerns of residents. Citizens often credit Rob with being available after hours and on weekends. Rob is committed to organizing new voluntary-based neighborhood associations. His efforts involve a significant number of hours and patience, and his work is critical in improving the quality of life in Ward 3. We appreciate Rob's hard work and dedication, and on behalf of the entire City Council, it's a pleasure to name Rob the January 2012 Employee of the Month. He's going to be given a certificate. There you go, Rob. There's your certificate, Employee of the Month, January 2012. And you've been given a $100 Visa gift card from Nevada Federal Credit Union, is that correct?
Not yet.
Okay, and did you spend it?
Not yet.
Okay. Sure you're gonna spend it. And a donation of $100 will be made to the charity of his choice by SuperPon. I'd first like to ask Councilman Coffin to say a few words about Rob.
And if you will be, Mayor, thank you very much. Rob, I'm proud of you, and you know, you were in our office the first person we thought about nominating, because we couldn't have functioned as well without you. I know as a new person on the council, as the Mayor Pro Tem called me the day after the election, said, "You're the new kid and welcome." I really, really did feel like that, and you made it so much easier for me to navigate the rocks and shoals of this bureaucracy. You really know how to make it happen, and you know what is needed in our neighborhoods. I was amazed when I went out, ladies and gentlemen, went out to all the schools, for example, to give supplies to the kids, and Rob knew every staff person. He knew the principals, he knew the people who really ran the schools. He really knew the background, not only at the schools, but in many other things, the neighborhood associations. Who makes things happen? Who are the biggest people to know, the biggest complainers, and the biggest helpers? He knows them all. And I know that he assists in Ward 6 with Councilman Ross, too, so it goes without saying, he has his hands full. Particularly with Ward 3, because it's so old, and we have so many problems, as the place, you know, is starting to come back. It needs this kind of work. You're the perfect person. We couldn't have asked for a better Employee of the Month. So, thank you for being what you are.
Steve, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, and first of all, congratulations, Rob. Rob has been with the department as a part of the Neighborhood Outreach Team since 2007. He works countless hours during the day and evening, neighborhood organizing meetings, helping neighbors with issues. This man has exceptional customer service. He never gives up. He really cares, and it shows in each and every day. I've never seen the man in a bad mood. He's always smiling, he's always helping everybody out, and we really appreciate the Rob. So, congratulations on behalf of the whole department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. You know, Rob, you're a perfect example of the great employees that we have at the City of Las Vegas, and it's great that we're honoring you today as Employee of the Month, so I'd like to ask you to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Anthony. Oh, thank you very much. Thanks, Councilman. Thank you, members of the council, especially Councilman Coffin, and it's a pleasure working very much, too, with Councilman Ross, and he used to work a lot with Councilwoman Tarkanian and everybody. And everybody, I want to thank my director, Steve Harson, and our deputies, Lonnie Zimmerman and Lisa Morris Hibbler, and my Neighborhood Outreach Team, Marty Toledo, Lisa Campbell, Ann Kilponen, Harry Williams, Alma Estrada, and there are so many names, but Susan Finukin and Michelle Thaxton and Maria Castillo Couch, the rest of Parks and Rec and Neighborhood Services, Pete Priest, Lori Lopez Newman, Maria Vehill. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, we're a team and everything, I'm out in the community, but I rely so heavily. I want to thank especially my wife, Christie, and my sons Noah and David, who share me with the city on many occasions, and the best part of my job, really, is that working for the city here is that people matter, on every level, getting to help residents make their lives better, improve their community. I get to see the best in people, both among our staff and among the citizens. Every day, people contact me, talking about how they could better watch out for their neighbors, how they could make their community better, how they could volunteer their time to make the city a better place to live and work. And it's a privilege to work for an organization where leadership, the leadership values what I do to make a difference each day, and they value the people of the community so, so much. And thank you all for the privilege of letting me serve the City of Las Vegas.
Great job, Rob. And he's an Eagle Scout, so, thank you very much, we're honored to have you as part of Okay, for our next item, I'd like to turn this over to Councilman Wolfson, who is going to recognize the Chinese New Year celebration. Woo-hoo! Before you guys get going, Rob, I think that Mayor Pro Tem, where are you, Rob? Rob? Rob, I think Mayor Pro Tem forgot to tell you something. It's my understanding, as part of the new tradition in 2012, that Mayor Pro Tem, you didn't have to come up here. It's not that big of a deal. Is that Mayor Pro Tem, in addition to congratulating you for being the Citizen of the Month and getting the $100 gift certificate and the charity by SuperPon, is that Mayor Pro Tem is gonna give you 10 free golf lessons, too. Are you a golfer, Rob? Well, he's the best.
Is that gonna help him or hurt him?
Okay. We like to have a little fun here on the City Council, so. I hope you all had a chance to see the performers in the plaza before the council meeting this morning. We've got some of them right over here, and they were fantastic. Those talented men and women are part of the Lohan School of Shaolin, and they do such a great job every year, helping us ring in the Chinese New Year. I'd like to also recognize Stephen Baugh. He's the Grand Master of the Lohan School of Shaolin, and I want to thank Stephen for bringing his students out. Maybe a little performance here, Stephen, what do you think?
Chinese New Year begins according to the Chinese calendar, which consists of both the Gregorian and lunar-solar calendar systems. Because the track of the new moon changes from year to year, Chinese New Year can begin anytime between late January and mid-February. This year, the start of the Chinese New Year is on January 23rd. It is the Year of the Dragon. In addition to the Lohan School of Shaolin, we are honored to have with us the President and CEO of CHD, David Wang. David, why don't you come up, David, please? David is committed to economic development and forming business relationships that lead to job creations. Along with Nevada Lieutenant Governor Brian Krolicki, David has served on numerous missions to China on behalf of the Nevada Commission on Tourism and the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority. CHD is one of the co-organizers of the Chinese New Year 2012, which is called Dragon in the Desert. Other organizers include the Fremont Street Experience, the LVCVA, and Golden Catalyst. This will be the first-ever Chinese New Year celebration held in downtown Las Vegas. We are back! The five-day festival will begin with opening ceremonies on Tuesday, January 24th, at 6:00 PM. You've already had a preview this morning of some of the entertainment that you can expect to see out there at both the opening and closing ceremonies. As part of that celebration, the organizers are hosting over 2,000 international visitors during the week of the festival, and I'm sure we can all appreciate what 2,000 visitors to our economy in our local downtown area will do. So, David, why don't you tell us some of the exciting plans that your organization has for celebrating the Chinese New Year and Dragon in the Desert, and then I've got something special for you.
Thank you, the council members, allowing me to have the opportunity to be out here today. You know, just like Bob, you know, we have many qualities that Bob has. You know, we are very dedicated and passionate about our city, and hope to drive a lot of tourism from China and Southeast Asia out here to our city. We are the one that show the folks the greater experience when they come to Las Vegas. And this year is a very special year, because our company is aligned with LVCVA and the Fremont Street Experience to host the first Chinese New Year ever, you know, a venue that never been made out here in Las Vegas before. So, this is an exciting time. We also co-host with the United Airlines and American Airlines that drive over 2,000 folks from China to be out here until Las Vegas. So, we all want you to come out and celebrate with us. The Chinese New Year actually starts on the 23rd, but our event on Fremont Street will begin on the 24th throughout the 28th. Thank you very much.
David, it's my pleasure, on behalf of the mayor, who's not here today, but she sends her best, and the entire City Council, to recognize 2012 Chinese New Year celebration. The City of Las Vegas is proud to recognize its Asian community and all of the wonderful contributions made to our great city. In celebration, we pay special tribute to David Wang of CHD, and the City of Las Vegas recognizes Mr. Wang's efforts to coordinate the first-ever Chinese New Year Festival in fabulous downtown Las Vegas, and we applaud Mr. Wang for hosting 2,000 international visitors. So, on behalf of the mayor and the entire council, I hereby proclaim Chinese New Year, Year of the Dragon, recognizing David Wang.
So, I imagine all of you are gonna be out in downtown on January 23rd and 24th. Raise your hands if you're gonna be out there. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you so much, David.
Okay, are the Dragons gonna entertain us, or they've already done that? Thanks, Dragons, for coming down. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good job, Councilman Wolfson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there they go. Thank you. Okay, and for our final item, I'd like to personally recognize a particular organization. There's an organization here called Toys for Smiles. That's what they called themselves back when they got started in 2006. There were three volunteers, and they were working out of somebody's garage in a residential neighborhood, and they decided that they were going to make toys for kids. And here's an example of the toys they started making, and they're all up and down in front of the City Council, and I'm assuming that you can all take one of these as you leave. Thank you, Councilman Barlow. And since 2006, Toys for Smiles has grown to 50 volunteers, donors, and I am honored to say that they have completed and made 100,000 of these toys since then to give to kids. And I'd like to ask Rex Doty, the founder and president, Rex, would you come on up, and his secretary and treasurer, who happens to be his wife, Mary Doty, to come up to the podium.
Good morning.
Thank you, Rex and Mary.
Toys for Smiles uses donated scrap wood and is always looking for additional sponsors and resources. Toys for Smiles has over 70 clients in Nevada and has about 25 corporate donors. Toys for Smiles has given over 5,000 toys to Nels Air Force Base, over 7,000 toys to Catholic charities, and over 15,000 toys to the Clark County School District. Toys for Smiles was awarded the 2010 Jefferson Award for Nevada, which is a prestigious award that recognizes individuals who perform great public service. Working out of their toy factory and using their own tools, Toys for Smiles has been able to make and give away toys to needy children since 2006, thanks to the generosity of many people, organizations, and community members. This is a story of spirit, drive, and dedication on the part of Rex and Mary, and I know I speak for everyone when I say thank you for everything that you've done for the kids in our community. So, on behalf of the mayor and the entire City Council, I'd like to present you a certificate of appreciation, presented to Rex Doty and Toys for Smiles for making 100,000 toys for our kids, and I think they're probably gonna make another 100,000 coming very soon. So, thank you very much and congratulations.
Would you like to say a few words, Rex?
Anthony told me I could speak as long as I wanted, correct? No. There's a few pages, but this big print, because I'm a senior, this'll take about five minutes, but I just want to thank the council and having me here and letting me show the world, the entire world, what we do here for Las Vegas and what can be done in other parts of the country. Pro Tem Anthony, or Star Wars Anthony, gosh, you've been with us forever. You've supported us, you've made us what we are, you've put the word out, you've allowed us to become part of the community, and without that, that wouldn't happen. Couple of years ago, we moved over to Ward 4, Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian, and her support and encouragement has just been phenomenal, and it's things like that we need. So, I appreciate the chance to be up here. I want to thank, you know, the donors, the supporters, the people who have come forth, the helpers, and make these toys, because if nobody makes their toys, nothing happens here, so you folks out there, you made it happen. And as we just mentioned, Mary, she's the Lou that's kept this thing together for over five and a half years. But, oh, he messed up my papers. Okay, there we go. Just to share a few things, how do we serve the community? Do we cure illnesses? Nope. Do we help people who are injured get better? Nope. Do we clothe people? Do we feed people? None of those things happen, which I believe are the most important things to do in the community. So, why do we make the toys? We make them for one reason only, to create a smile. And the groups I just mentioned to you that need us and need our support, need our backing to make things happen in their lives, we give them a toy. And at that time, that smile is something that just encourages them to feel better about themselves, and it also allows them to realize that somebody out there that they don't even know cares about them, and that's why we do what we do. It's a matter of, see these pages flipping, this big print? Wood supply. We had a woods donor for over a year, Master Brand Caverners. They just closed their shop in Las Vegas on December 6th. They lost our wood, you know, they didn't have any more. Couple of months ago, they called us and says, "Well, come on in January." They increased their wood supply, but all of yous out there, if you know any people in the milling business and the lumber business, we need wood. Been crying for three years. We need a temperature-controlled building, so the seniors, the kids and stuff can come there and know, they can be there every day, and make toys, and form relationships, and become friends, and make this thing happen. So many buildings in this town, come on, one of yous can do this for us. Crazy thing, now we need a fork truck. We had a little 55-gallon drum for wood, now we need a fork truck. I gotta jump this in here, I'm retired from Caterpillar Tractor Company for 25 years. Anybody out there have any contacts in this town that'd love to have a cat fork truck in their house? And, you know, things like that. The other thing I wanted to mention is 90% of our donations come from corporations and, excuse me, 50% of our donations come from corporations and individuals out of this state. I want that to change. I want to challenge you to all step up and help us support this program, help us support our kids, because 90% of the toys right now are going to the Las Vegas area. So, reach out to them. Website, toysforsmileslasvegas.org. We've got, my shop phone number is 702-232-8191. Grab a toy on your way out. If you got a person in mind to give that toy to, a child, grab another one, because what you really see what this does is when you give a toy to a kid that's having a bad day that you don't even know, that's what makes this thing happen, that's what pushes us forward. So, you know, God bless all of yous sitting on the bench there, there's a huge donation box, it'll fit most anything you want to put in it, so if you can go by there, that's appreciated, and once again, to the city, to the council, and everybody, thanks for allowing this to happen. Thank you.
Good job, Rex. Thank you, Mary. Thanks, all of you, for coming out to support him, and if you're watching this, or you hear about it, and you'd like to help Rex and Mary make more toys and put smiles on kids, please help them out. Take a toy on the way out, and thank you very much. We're gonna take a couple minutes to get organized, and we'll continue on with our meeting.
If there's any toys left, just maybe give them to the people where they come in the door, hand them out, and give them away.
Thank you, folks. Okay. You ready? Okay, let's continue on with our City Council meeting, but first... Okay, let's continue on with our city council meeting, but first, I would like to recognize some special guests that are joining us this morning. Like to recognize the student council from Paul Cully Elementary School, who is here this morning, and their advisor, Jessica Kitchens. If you could all stand up.[615.82][615.82](APPLAUSE). I see that all of you got a toy for smiles. You got a big smile on your face? All right, good job. I just want to recognize these great young kids. The mayor recently had a chance to visit your school and see all the great things that you're learning and all the hard work that your teachers are putting into it. We also have a City of Las Vegas employee who is a graduate of Paul Cully, Ted Olivas, our Government Affairs Director, who I think graduated in 1913 from Paul Cully.[650.66][650.66](LAUGHING). He kind of looks that old most of the time. So, thanks for showing up. Go ahead and have a seat, and hope you stay with us as long as you can.
Okay. Item number, item number eight is public comment during this portion of the agenda. Must be limited to matters on the agenda for action.
Thank you. Okay, we're on item number eight. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitting a speaker card or wishes to be heard during the portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We will set the time at one minute. And first, we'll start with Anthony Hodges, who has submitted a speaker card.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I was just asking about the, it says on the public works, the removal pole at Charleston and Jones. You know, is that because they have to widen the street or what? What is the project about?
What item are you referring to?
Okay, that's item 33.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, the project, it says, the Boulevard at Jones and Valley View, okay, they're removing a pole, is that to widen the street? I mean...
I'll pull that item for you, and we'll give you an answer to that.
Okay, and then the next one to it is about the Main Street project at, you know, at Boulder and Flamingo. It's for the flood, the flood control. That's 34, right next to it. Yeah, okay. And I was going to say 35, but those two will be enough, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. No questions but two comments on item number 34. Although this item isn't directly affected, I am against the regional flood control paving the bottoms of those channels for two reasons. Number one, the reeds and the plant life offset the heat sink effect. And number two, the plant life and the reeds and that, they filter the water before it gets to the wash in the lake. So, even, like I say, even though this item is not affected, on a general principle, I'm against them paving the bottoms of the flood control panels. On item number 36, that's an excellent project. I hope I have everybody's support on that, because that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Mayor Pro Tem, I just might state that the reason why they do want to put the concrete in the bottom of the ditches is because they lose so much water. That's a problem. I understand what you're saying about the reeds, but I think they sort of balance that, and they were losing such a large percentage of water that we need so much, that that's why they're trying to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you. I will. And we will go on to item number nine for possible action. Any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting, maybe brought forward and acted upon at this time? Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I don't believe there are any that need to be pulled.
Very good. Thank you.
That's next.
I would like to take from consent.
That's the next one. Okay. Okay, so, we have none of those items under agenda item nine. Okay, item number 10 for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the regular city council meeting of January 4, 2012. Councilman Wilson.
Move to approve.
Please vote.
Hold on, I mean...
Isn't item number 40, isn't that going to be obeyed?
Thank you. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll now go to the consent agenda. Items 11 through 36, with the exception of item 36, we're going to have a presentation. And items 33 and 34, we'll pull those and answer those particular questions. Any other items that need to be pulled on the consent? Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. Please pull item number 12.
Item number 12. Okay, items 11 through 36, with the exceptions of items 12, 33, 34, and 36 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, are recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. We've pulled those four items. Councilman Wilson.
So move to approve all the others.
Okay, please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. We will go to item number 12 for possible action to approve the ratification of Felipe A. Ortiz in a council support position as special assistant to the mayor city council toward three. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to give a special attention to a new member of the 10th floor of staff, Felipe Ortiz, who is in the audience today, and I know most of you have met him. Please stand, Felipe. You don't have to come up here, but Felipe recently retired from a long-term career with the federal government in parole and probation. He's the perfect kind of person to have on the 10th floor with his experience. He comes with handcuffs, and we're delighted to have his body of experience. I wanted to make sure that the public was aware Felipe knew that he'd be helping Ward Three. We've been short-staffed for a long time, so we're delighted to have.[1046.83][1046.83](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations, Councilman Coffin. Do you have a motion?
I move to approve. Item number 12.
Okay, we have a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll go to items number 33 and 34. Somebody come up here and just quickly answer those couple of questions by Mr. Hodges. Item number 33 for possible action to approve Rule 9 line extension agreement number 7005 between the City of Las Vegas and Nevada Energy to cover the construction expense associated with the removal and relocation of a power pole at the northeast corner of Jones Boulevard and Charleston Boulevard from the Jones Valley View Corridor Improvement Project. Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Jorge Salavantas, Department of Public Works. This item is to create a right turn lane that would go for west to northbound traffic along Charleston to Jones as part of the Jones Improvement Project.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Okay, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I move to approve.
Okay, please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 34 for possible action to approve second supplemental interlocal contract LAS 29810 between the City of Las Vegas and Clark County Regional Flood Control District. Increase project funding for engineering design of the Flamingo Wash Boulder Highway North Main Street project from Wyoming Avenue to Charleston Boulevard. Ward Three, Councilman Coffin, go right ahead.
Yes, this item is a designed, it's a funding agreement with the Regional Flood Control District to do the sign of a storm drain pipe that would be on Main Street for storm drain runoff, and it would be between Wyoming and Charleston.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
This, then, as was addressed by one of the speakers in public comment, does not address a wash at this present time, does it?
This item has nothing to do with the wash. It's called the wash because it's part of a larger system that eventually drops into the wash, so this is a pipe under the roadway. It's not doing any improvements to the wash itself.
Yes, I know we need this, because this is part of what has stopped flooding downtown, this whole system, and so it's urban street flooding.
That's correct.
But I share the witnesses, prior witnesses, prior speakers' sentiments on this, the cementing over of so many of our washes. I suppose the proper thing would be to cement the walls in order to define the size of them, but I, the floor and the fauna really do suffer. And you know what? It speeds up the water flow tremendously, which is not a good thing, because that creates erosion. So, one of the other, I miss the good old days when you had these things without cement. So, I'm kind of certainly siding with him on that issue, but it doesn't affect this present project, so that's the end of my comments.
Do you have a motion?
I will move to approve. Item 34.
Okay, we have a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And last, item number 36, this was on the consent agenda, but during our briefings, it's a pretty exciting project, and I thought it'd be good to have a little public discussion just to let everybody know what we're doing here. This is item number 36 for possible action to approve a resolution in support of the Vegas Valley Rim Trail, a regional trail system that surrounds the Las Vegas Valley, offering recreational opportunities to Las Vegas residents and visitors. So, why don't we do a good presentation, let everybody know what's going on here? Mr. Perrigo.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Tom Perrigo, Sustainability Officer with the Department of Administrative Services. Really, my role today is just to introduce Maurice Ibaka, who also has Ray Lassner up with her, who's going to make a presentation on the Vegas Valley Rim Trail.
Hello, city council members. Thank you so much for having us here today, and we very much appreciate your consideration of this resolution. This is, as you noted, about the Vegas Valley Rim Trail, which is a project that's actually been in contemplation for many, many years now. Tom Perrigo is involved in the Las Vegas Open Space Plan process, where that was initially contemplated, that there would be a trail system, an open space system, that would literally encircle this valley and connect the jewels of the valley. In the past couple of years, we've been engaging in additional processes with the public. For the first six months of last year, we worked with focus groups, with stakeholders, with community members to develop the naming and branding for this project so that we could really bring people around it. So, we worked with the City of Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Clark County, City of Henderson, the Southern Nevada Agency Partnership, a broad spectrum of people, including Milis Air Force Base and the Las Vegas Paiute Tribe. The Vegas Valley Rim Trail was the name that everybody agreed upon, and a logo was rolled out on October 1st, and we've been working with the jurisdictions to develop these resolutions so that as we move forward and proceed with developing fundraising for the schematic planning process, we can demonstrate to our community members that all of our jurisdictions have come out in favor of this project and are embracing a cooperative and collaborative effort towards making this a reality. What we'll be looking at in the future, once this is complete, is over 100 miles around encircling this valley, creating a fabulous interconnected system that residents and visitors will be able to use. It will be a legacy project for years and years and years to come, and I think just a fabulous way to highlight some of the really special elements of the Las Vegas Valley, because we do have so many that we haven't done, I think, as good, it's good enough a job as we could have in terms of celebrating ourselves with the world and some of the great resources that we do have. So, the Vegas Valley Rim Trail is being put before you as a resolution, and I very much hope that you embrace this resolution. It has been put in front of the City of North Las Vegas City Council, the City of Henderson City Council, who have approved the resolution. The Regional Transportation Commission has approved the resolution. A resolution is being contemplated by the Southern Nevada Agency Partnership, and is also before the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, and has been approved by their technical committee. In addition, Clark County approved a resolution in advance of the National Trails Day celebration. And I'd be more than happy to answer all your questions, or any questions that you might have.
Any comments or questions from the council? Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Oh, I was just going to move to approve.[1458.15][1458.15](LAUGHING).
Well, before we do that, do we have any, Councilman Ross?
I know you mentioned all of those other organizations. None of those really count. This is the organization that counts when it comes to pushing this along and moving this through. And as I look at the map, a great deal, and everybody's involved, I see that, and I want to recognize all those people as you just did, but this is really exciting for the future of the valley as a whole. And I'm looking at the map thinking, where am I going to get on the trail, and how far am I going to go? But this is the beginning stages of all that, so congratulations. I see Mike Ross out in the audience, too. I know, Mike, you've been involved with that as well, so thank you for all that, all of you've done, Tom, you as well, to make this happen. Congratulations.
Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's too bad, it's not, the map itself is not up right now for public viewing, and I don't know whether or not in the engineering they can put that up for the further future broadcast of this council meeting. But I'll tell you what, it's going to be a big thing for us, because we're going to have to challenge each other to hike this trail.[1521.46][1521.46](LAUGHING). There will be a time when we'll all be challenged on that, and I'm sure we can do it for fundraising purposes and for many other things, those of us who can do it and/or wagers on the side.
Okay.[1532.26][1532.26](LAUGHING).
So, I'm all for it, and I think since I've been on RPC, this is one of the more interesting things that we have had a chance to plug for. We think, well, at 120 miles, I think it's going to take several days for some of us to hike. It's not going to be a one-day thing, although if anybody can do it in a non-stop, we better bring them in for Citizen of the Month.[1551.26][1551.26](LAUGHING).
Yes.
I have a feeling you have something up your sleeve there, Councilman Coffin. So, where do people go to get information about this, where the trail is, how they get access to it?
Currently, it's in the planning stage, so they're not going to be able to go and see exactly where the trail alignment is. This is the initial phase, really, so that we can start to establish that trail alignment. There's information on our website, www outsideslasvegas.org. We've also established a Facebook page, so as new developments happen, people can go on Facebook and look for the Vegas Valley Rim Trail, so that they can stay abreast of that. We're also in process, I should mention, we're working with the University of Las Vegas with their, with some of their economics folks, and they're going to be preparing for us an economic analysis of this trail as well, so that we can begin this process as we move into some of the serious, really nuts-and-bolds planning with an economic analysis as well.
So, if they go to that website, that's where they can get updates on it?
Correct.
And I believe it's on our website, too, right? The Los City, Las Vegas website? If it isn't, we should have something up there.
And we're going to be establishing, as well, as this process moves along, there will be a standalone website for the Vegas Valley Rim Trail. It's not up as yet, but that will be, that's in the works.
Okay. You know, you go to most big cities, and they have the trail system like this where people can get out and exercise and get fresh air, meet each other, so I appreciate you taking the lead on this and working with Tom, and it's going to be pretty exciting.
Well, I have to say, it's been a pleasure, really, working with Tom Perrigo and with so many, I think, of the visionary folks here at the City of Las Vegas, who have very much embraced the trails and open space system. And I think one of the great opportunities of the Vegas Valley Rim Trail is that every time we label a section, every time we construct a section, it gives us an opportunity to trumpet ourselves for the world, not just about the Vegas Valley Rim Trail, but about the existing trails and open space that we have that this is going to be linking, because there already are some tremendous resources out there. I brought Ray Lathrup out here because she's working on that adopted trail program, and I want to put in a plug for February 18th, Saturday, February 18th, which will be Impact Las Vegas, and Ray's been organizing volunteers to work on two City of Las Vegas trails in one park, bringing hundreds of people out there to do just, I'd say, kind of a pre-spring cleaning and get us kicked off right for the beautiful spring weather ahead of the summer weather.
Very good. Okay, Councilwoman Tarkanian, you had a motion?
Well, I had a motion. I wanted to say that what Councilman Ross said was very true. I think each of us council members is very proud of what we've been able to do to help push this forward, and very proud of Mr. Perrigo also for all that he's done and of the work you've done, and I just made the simple motion to approve.
Very good. Please vote. Please post.
I think you were out.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thanks for coming down. Appreciate it.
Thank you.[1730.90][1730.90](APPLAUSE).
Okay, our next item is item number 37. This is an abeyance item for possible action on boards and commissions, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. William Teal, term expires December 17, 2011. The option is for the council to appoint Mr. Teal or appoint a new member to fill the seat, and I believe Councilman Coffin has something on this.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I spoken to Mr. Teal, interviewed him in December. He would like to continue to serve. He's been a good, faithful member of the commission. Therefore, I would move that we reappoint William Teal to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
Okay, we have a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Teal, for serving. Next item, item number 38 is an abeyance item for possible action, Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada RTC Advisory Committee on Bus Shelter Bench Construction Committee on Bus Shelter, Bench Construction and Maintenance, Mel Erwin. Term expires January seventh, twenty-twelve. Procedure for the, this board requires appointment by the city council. The option is to appoint a new member to fill the seat. Councilwoman Tarkanian, you have a?
I move to obey this for two more weeks.
Okay, motion to obey for two weeks? February first, thank you. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, items number thirty-nine through forty-one, bills twenty-twelve dash one through twenty-twelve dash three are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. We will move on to new bills. Okay, items, items forty-two and forty-three, bills twenty-twelve dash four and twenty-twelve dash five will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, January thirty-first, twenty-twelve. I'd like to have these bills read.
On behalf of your members, Bill number twenty-two dash four, in order to adopt the twenty-oh-nine edition of the National Residential Code, together with Amendment Two, amend the city's administrative code regarding repetitive plans and provide for related matters. And finally, Bill number twenty-twelve dash five, in order to update the nuisance abatement provisions of the municipal code to reflect recent changes of state law regarding notice periods of civil penalties and provide for related matters.
Thank you. New bills twenty-twelve four and twenty-twelve five are assigned to council members Barlow and Coffin on the recommending committee. So, thank you. That's the end of our morning session. We will reconvene at one o'clock for the afternoon session. Thank you very much. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming down. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order for the afternoon session. We'll start with item number forty-four for possible action. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff or the applicant wish to be strictly tabled, withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting, maybe brought forward and acted upon at this time? Councilman Wilson?
Is that me? Yes, sir. Item number forty-six, SUP four-two-six-four-eight, applicant Ace Loan Company Owner, BF Trust, five-one-nine. There's been a request to withdraw this item without prejudice. That request was by the applicant. Item number forty-seven, ARC four-three-six-seven-two, applicant Continental Suites, owner twelve-thirteen South Las Vegas Boulevard LLC. There's been a request by the applicant to obey this to February fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. And finally, items forty-eight through fifty, variants forty-three-three-five-nine, SUP forty-three-three-five-eight, and SDR forty-three-three-six-oh. Applicant, Bustin Suds Car Wash, owner JGM Holdings LLC. A request to obey this matter to the March twenty-first, two thousand and twelve meeting. That request is by the applicant, so my motion would be consistent with those requests.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Please vote.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Wilson, what was the date for forty-eight and fifty?
March twenty-first.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to go at, at Councilman Barlow's request, we're going to go to item number sixty-seven, before we start with item number forty-five. So, we're gonna go to item number sixty-seven. This is a SDR four-two-nine-eight-seven, Site Development Plan Review, Public Hearing, applicant CIM POB Las Vegas LLC, owner City of Las Vegas, for possible action, on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed general retail store, other than listed, and Plaza on two-point-eight-three acres of, at three-hundred North Casino Center Boulevard. This is in Ward Five. Councilman Barlow, the planning commission, and staff both recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I will now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Todd Kessler, on behalf of the applicant. Two-oh-six North Third Street is my address. The applicant is CIM POB. I'm here to talk about the project a little bit, inform you folks and the public a little bit. I was expecting some other guests, and hopefully they'll attend, but it is our intention to turn this into a reuse project for a temporary basis, as the CIM folks continue to design the permanent structure that will go behind the Ma Museum. So, this is a permanent, I mean, sorry, a temporary reuse, if you would. And the intention is to make it into a farmer's market, that also additionally has food trucks, and what is known as pop-up retail. And pop-up retail, just in case you don't know, is a, similar to a food truck, but it's a retail store. It typically is not, is movable, as those, they don't have their own wheels. They typically come on the back of a truck or something. It's a little mini-store that people sell their hand crafts at and so forth, so I wanted to make sure you understood what that was. And we've, they've been lucky enough to, to partner up with- forward to me as relates to any outdoor sound music, the ability for entertainment, um, whether it be during the week, on the weekend. Where are you at in that respect?
Well, I don't think we've come up with the programming for that, but I think, uh, you bring up a great point as it relates to those, the potential things. I, I'll probably let Flynn talk a little bit about whether or not it's gonna fall under a, a special event permit or not, but, um, our, part of our plan doesn't call out for that, so that's.
The reason I ask is because I spend, um, over the summers quite a bit of time in Seattle. Um, I believe it's Pike's Place.
Pike's Market, yeah.
Parks, Pike's Market, and, um, very cool spot, you know, for the residents and tourists alike, uh, coming into Seattle, and, um, and I see that they have entertainment and different things like that and, and host, uh, entertainment in the evenings, and so I know that we've just went through, uh, some conversation in regards to, uh, noise in the downtown, and so I wanna make sure that we stay ahead of that conversation so that we can basically work collectively to mitigate a lot of the, uh, possible issues into the future, and so I wanna make sure that we have at least a program that we all can agree upon, uh, because it is something that I do support and something that I would like to see, um, in the downtown from a cultural standpoint, and, uh, just want us to have some dialogue in that respect.
Absolutely, and we would, we'd be happy to work, you, work with staff on that when those needs arise, if it, if it fits into this, um, but again, from our typical hours of operation, I don't think we'll find some of the problems that have occurred with the previous noise, um, complaints as two AM, one AM. It's, it's, it's uses aren't gonna be, you know, way into the evening, let's just say.
Okay, and so just work that conversation out with staff, if you will, and if you have any, uh, issues or run across any hurdles, then make sure to pull, uh, myself in on those conversations so that we can mitigate those issues. Um, as it relates to the, um, um...
Food trucks and...
Food trucks, thank you. The food trucks. What is the process for one who wants to bring their food truck out? Because there's a variety of food trucks now, you know, with a lot of various, you know, diverse of food product.
We are so...
As well as retail product. Um, talk to me in regards to that, and I know that there's even a truck out there that has some adult-like product as well, um, on some of the retail trucks, and so I wanna make sure, you know, that we have this family-oriented, uh, act, uh, market in the downtown, but, you know, of course, we wanna make sure that it remains as clean as possible.
Sure. I wasn't even unaware that they...
For families to enjoy, so, I mean, you know, from a, you know, going back to the First Amendment, right, and, you know, these trucks being, you know, licensed, you know, how do we, you know, regulate that to make sure that we continue to keep our downtown clean?
Yeah, sure. I was actually personally unaware that anything besides food was ever sold from those trucks. Um, but, you know, we, we, we've really embraced the food trucks. It's an incredible growing area of, of the retail community, um, and we're in the process, and, uh, just based on the planning commission discussions, I've had numerous folks come to me specifically about, hey, how do I get involved? Um, and we are...
Is it open to the public, or do you all select and pick and choose?
Yeah, it's open to the public.
Who comes, who goes?
We're in the still the pro, yes, it would be open to any food truck that wants to come on. There's a lot of other issues that go along with the food trucks that we're working out with staff as it relates to some of the health ordinances and some of the other restrictions that are posed on food trucks from a state level. I'll share just a couple of issues, is you can't be parked in a situation for more than thirty minutes, and so there's a lot of things occurring behind the scenes that'll help clean that up to allow for a greater flexibility for a food truck to stay in a, in a more permanent location, and staff is working diligently on that to help us resolve those issues, but from its inception, we're starting off just with the farmer's market, let's just say, and we're gonna begin the, getting all of the, the hurdles, let's say, that are in the way right now for the food trucks and the other pop-up retail to occur and start working that, but absolutely, it is open to anyone from a food truck perspective. I, we're not looking to do any of those funky retails, I mean, that's not our desire, but again, there are some First Amendment rights to it, but our desire is simply to allow food trucks to go downtown for, you know, during the lunch hour and on the evening hours and so forth, but there's a lot of other things occurring, but this, this SDR does approve that, but as far as when we do open, the food trucks will not be an initial component. It'll happen shortly thereafter when we resolve some of the health issues that go on with it.
Okay, and I can appreciate that.
And if it's okay, I just saw, uh, Kerry come in. If, if, if it's okay for me to have her talk a little bit?
Please.
Sure.
Kerry?
Thank you. She's one of the late Miss County members.
Mayor, your honor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Just real quick. Mr. Kessler.
Sure.
What, what was, what did you call her a few minutes ago? Cause I really liked that.
The intuitive forager.
Intuitive forager, okay.
Say it again, scrounge, did you? No, I don't do much scrounging, thank you.
Go ahead and identify yourself, please.
Uh, my name is Kerry Clasby, and, um, I will be the sort of cornerstone of the farmer's market in addition to all the other local farmers who will be coming in, and first let me say thank you very much. This is really a, a godsend for the Las Vegas community to be able to have a enclosed area, be, because as we all know, I think, um, one of the drawbacks to the farmers coming to the, uh, markets has been the extremities, you know, the real extreme weather conditions, so this is a beautiful opportunity for us, and I just wanna say thank you. Um, we are an authentic farmer's market, mostly organic, all local, um, and then I come with a big truck supplementing what we cannot grow here, tangerines, um, I have some mangoes in season now, but we go through the season. Um, this was, uh, a gift for us because the chefs are subs, are basically subsidizing this for us so that we're able to get the best organic product from California and be able to have economically a market for the farmers to be able to make enough money to make a living, so it's really a great thing, and it'll be all pure, all certified, all organic, and, um, uh, we, we, I do this now at the Mario Batali Market on Thursdays, and we're hoping to open this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday eventually. We're gonna start out on Fridays, God willing, if it works out that the community wants us, and it, it's a great thing. I mean, I think that's the biggest piece of it, to have it to be a community gathering place, um, where children and families, we're doing a craft room for the children, and we'll do, you know, an area picnic table so that children and families can come, so it'll really be, uh, I think, energizing, and, um, I've run farmer's markets for fourteen years. I own one in Moore Park, California. Um, I, I live in Westlake Village, and, um, I, I used to live in Las Vegas about ten years ago, so I am so grateful to be back, and especially in this venue. It's, it's gonna be, uh, I think, a world-class market, and, uh, it'll be a blessing for the community, in my opinion.
So where does this produce come from?
Um, come, well, I grow ten thousand heirloom tomato plants in Santa Paula, California, all organically, and then I get, um, majority of my citrus from Ojai, Santa Barbara, San Diego, Fallbrook area, and, um, a lot of my other vegetables from asparagus and garlic from Gilroy and Hollister. I have a truck, a refrigerator truck that goes up to the organic farms on Saturday and Sunday and goes to the Berkeley and the Abarcadero and the, the, um, Oakland Farmer's Markets, and then comes down on Tuesday, Monday and Tuesday, we gather at the farms all the way down, and then we drive across the desert, so it's great.
Great, okay. Okay.
And come, you're all welcome to come for some free tangerines.
Councilman Coffin?
Well, I would like to think that we'd have some locally, or at least Nevada, grown produce here.
You have a, a lot of it. Uh, sixty percent, sixty to seventy percent of the market will be...
What I'm saying is, I hope that you will allow that in there. If you're gonna be the impresario of this, that you make sure that there's plenty of space for those growers.
Majority of space for those grow, I think there's eleven thousand square feet in here, and all I do is supplement. I talk to the growers and I find out what they do have, what they can't have, so that we make sure that these growers are supported, because that's the most important thing.
Now, does it have to be, in your opinion, all organic, or can it be...
No, no, we don't, we don't, uh, we don't, we just need to know so that if a consumer is allergic to something, we know exactly what the growing practices are, what their pest management is, um, how they're doing what they're doing, and I, I'm not, I'm organic because I can be, but if I was hit with a blight, I mean, this is the economics of a farmer. You have to do what's prudent. You have to do what makes sense.
Well, org, and, Mr., your honor, I, Mayor Portem, the, uh, organic costs more than stuff, you know, that's not organically super grown under the strict adherence to the principles, and so sometimes, uh, you know, you drive away people if you can't find something at a more reasonable price.
I agree with you, and also for lower-income families, where you have farmers that are able to sub, some of the ethnic communities, like Tomatillos and, and peppers, hot peppers and that type of thing, so we're gonna have all, the whole variety. We have plenty of space, so if any of you grow anything, be sure to come down. We have plenty of space.
I grow tomato worms.
Yes, I'm familiar with those, too.
Thank you.
I think I heard everybody up here grow something, so maybe... Okay, any other comments?
Yes, your honor.
Uh, Councilman Ross?
Thank you. Mr. Kessler, I think, uh, as I've driven by that, the old downtown transportation center every single day for, since we, it's moved over to the Bonneville Transportation Center, I've been curious as to what could that be one day? What's, what's that gonna, what's gonna happen there? So I pictured you and your team looking out the window going, you know, what can we do to bring bodies downtown? And I'm gonna tell you something, I think that this is gonna be so successful, and I'm grateful Councilman, uh, Barlow asked those questions about, you know, your times and the days, and this is flexible for staff, does it have to come before council, cause I think Councilman Barlow sees this as actually growing, too. You're gonna be bringing more bodies downtown, and, and Councilman, I wanna make a comment about the entertainment thing. Holy cow, the freeway's right behind there. I mean, goodness sakes, I think you're gonna have a great opportunity for entertainment venues, bringing people downtown, selling organic products, selling goodies, similar to what, uh, Councilman and I both experienced in Seattle, and other small communities that have these kind of venues. They're very, very popular with locals, and I see a bunch of locals sitting out here, so I'd like to see all of you, once they get this going, come on down. You don't live too far from here, cause I know pretty much your neighborhood, neighborhood you live in, so this is gonna be a best, big success, so much so, when the time comes we actually have to build the permanent building and the structure, it's gonna be probably difficult to get to that point, cause it's gonna be so successful.
I, I hope and pray that we have those tough decisions to make, so, and I believe in it, too.
Thank you, your honor.
Councilman, just quickly, too, as an educational venue, too, canning, composting, all these things that for years I've been doing, and I would love to share, and I have a list of great farmers, uh, to come and/or, uh, environmental types who will come and help us to learn how do we do recycling, what, uh, what, what the city is behind. I think it's a great thing.
Well, with the, with the Mayor, Mayor Portem's permission, you bring up a good point. I know Councilman Barlow's been working on a, an ordinance for community gardening, and we two out in the northwest have been working on community gardens and, uh, something out at Tulie Springs. Uh, a lot of people in this community are getting more into the community gardening, you know, gardening in their own backyards with a ten-by-ten plot. It's teaching that proven living, too.
Exactly.
And teaching people to survive and, and provide for themselves is a great educational opportunity, so I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Barlow, you have a motion?
Yes, I do. Um, I just wanna make sure that, um, uh, certain, uh, growers are not allowed in, into the downtown, specifically the one up at Lake Mead and Rampart, uh, that we talked about earlier.
Said a marijuana grower?
Today. I didn't say that, but...
None of that, Councilman.
I, I do wanna, although it may be organic, according to my colleague, um...
That's what the excuse they always use.
We have enough in the downtown already, so, um, let's keep it to the fruits and vegetables and peanuts and, and stay away from the poppy seeds. Um, so with that being said, I, I look forward to, to this coming into the downtown, and Councilman Ross, you, you, you hit the nail right on the head. The reason why I brought forward the conversation in regards to the north zone, because it is up against the freeway, and so I wasn't speaking against it, I'm speaking in, in favor of it, sending you an idea as far as really having the opportunity to program it after hours, you know, because it's just sitting there dormant today, but having the opportunity to do, you know, some, uh, outside entertainment, I think, would be, um, great for this location and, and continuing to grow in, in various aspects of what you have available to you, so, um, I'm all for it, and I really wanna thank you for being the true connoisseur that you are.
Yes.
And having the opportunity of working with you and bringing, uh, a lot of those goods and, uh, products that we don't have an opportunity to grow in our environment here.
Yes.
In Las Vegas, and I surely hope that it grows enough that you would move back to Las Vegas permanently and make this your primary residence versus temporary.
Yes, I would love that. And also, we're open to collaboration, so if anyone has any ideas, suggestions, grassroots movements, we wanna put a table there. We've got the space, we've got the venue, we'll have the, I have about two thousand people on my email list, they're dying to come down. We're right off the freeway, and the parking is tremendous, as you know, so anybody, come, please. We want the whole community involved.
And also, um, as a side note, I would like to introduce you to a young lady by the name of Rosalyn Brooks, who actually runs the Tonopah Community Garden right on Bonanza and Tonopah, uh, on a five-acre parcel.
I've heard a lot, I was on KNPR.
Yeah.
And someone called in about it, and, um, we, the woman that I was working with from the, um, university had said that she's got quite a project going on down there.
Yeah, she has a huge project, and I would like to see...
And anything we can do to support them and have them bring their wares down.
Absolutely. I think that would be huge, because those are the products that would be growing, that are growing currently, right now, in the downtown community, and so I think that would be a nice tie for them to have an opportunity to bring some of their fresh produce.
Exactly.
To the, to the facility.
Yes.
Councilwoman?
I just wanted to ask you, you said, uh, get down to the grassroots, that means if we do have community gardens, maybe some of the people who are involved in that, so that they can learn finance even to an extent. We have a garden, for example, at Rose Warren School in my ward, and the children there could learn the mathematics, the financing, and what goes about with commerce and everything, and you're saying that those would be welcome.
We all, we want all of those. We're having the master gardeners there. All of the not-for-profits should have a table at no, at no cha, charge, and Girl Scout, anyone that is a community, my Moore Park Market, it's filled with not-for-profits. The Girl Scouts are there when it's cookie time.
of locals sitting out here. So I'd like to see all of you, once they get this going, come on down. You don't live too far from here, because I know pretty much your neighborhood, neighborhood you live in. So this is going to be a big success. So much so, when the time comes, we actually have to build the permanent building and the structure, it's going to be probably difficult to get to that point, because it's going to be so successful.
I hope and pray that we have those tough decisions to make. And I believe in it, too.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilman, just quickly, too, as an educational venue, too, canning, composting, all these things that for years I've been doing, and I would love to share, and I have a list of great farmers who will come and/or environmental types who will come and help us to learn how do we do recycling, what the city is behind. I think it's a great thing.
With the mayor's, Mayor Protem's permission, you bring up a good point. I know Councilman Barlow's been working on an ordinance for community gardening, and we two out in the Northwest have been working on community gardens and something out at Tulie Springs. A lot of people in this community are getting more into the community gardening, you know, gardening in their own backyards with a 10-by-10 plot. It's teaching that proven living, too.
Exactly.
And teaching people to survive and provide for themselves is a great educational opportunity. So I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Barlow, you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I just want to make sure that certain growers are not allowed in, into the downtown, specifically the one up at Lake Mead and Rampart that we talked about...
Is that a marijuana grower?
Today. I didn't say that, but...
None of that, Councilman.
I do want, although it may be organic, according to my colleague...
That's what the excuse they always use.
We have enough in the downtown already. So let's keep it to the fruits and vegetables and peanuts, and stay away from the poppy seeds. So with that being said, I look forward to this coming into the downtown. And Councilman Ross, you hit the nail right on the head. The reason why I brought forward the conversation in regards to the North Zone, because it is up against the freeway, and so I wasn't speaking against it. I'm speaking in favor of it, sending you an idea as far as really having the opportunity to program it after hours, you know, because it's just sitting there dormant today.
Yes.
But having the opportunity to do, you know, some outside entertainment, I think, would be great for this location and continuing to grow in various aspects of what you have available to you. So I'm all for it, and I really want to thank you for being the true connoisseur that you are.
Yes.
And having the opportunity of working with you and bringing a lot of those goods and products that we don't have an opportunity to grow in our environment here in Las Vegas.
Yes.
And I surely hope that it grows enough that you would move back to Las Vegas permanently and make this your primary residence versus temporary.
Yes, I would love that. And also, we're open to collaboration. So if anyone has any ideas, suggestions, grassroots movements, we want to put a table there. We've got the space, we've got the venue, we'll have the, I have about 2,000 people on my email list. They're dying to come down. We're right off the freeway, and the parking is tremendous, as you know. So anybody, come, please. We want the whole community involved.
And also, as a side note, I would like to introduce you to a young lady by the name of Rosalyn Brooks, who actually runs the Tonopah Community Garden right on Bonanza and Tonopah on a five-acre parcel.
I've heard a lot, I was on KNPR.
Yeah.
And someone called in about it. And we, the woman that I was working with from the university had said that she's got quite a project going on down there.
Yeah, she has a huge project, and I would like to see...
And anything we can do to support them and have them bring their wares down.
Absolutely. I think that would be huge, because those are the products that would be growing, that are growing currently, right now, in the downtown community. And so I think that would be a nice tie for them to have an opportunity to bring some of their fresh produce to the, to the facility.
Yes, very helpful.
Councilwoman?
I just wanted to ask you, you said get down to the grassroots. That means if we do have community gardens, maybe some of the people who are involved in that, so that they can learn finance even, to an extent. We have a garden, for example, at Rose Warren School in my ward, and the children there could learn the mathematics, the financing, and what goes about with commerce and everything. And you're saying that those would be welcome.
We want all of those. We're having the master gardeners there. All of the not-for-profits should have a table at no, at no charge. And Girl Scout, anyone that is a community, my Moore Park Market, it's filled with not-for-profits. The Girl Scouts are there when it's cookie time. It should, this needs to be a place for everyone to feel like they're a part of the community. So any of these movements...
And do you have any cards with you that you could, you could just leave them...
Yes, I will, certainly, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Beverly, you'd share them with us. Thank you. Thank you. I think that'd be, educationally, having been an educator, that's the way you learn. You learn by doing, and it makes mathematics and all that other stuff a lot more interesting.
That's true.
As Carrie didn't know, but she's already been brought into discussions with Ross. She's, she would have found that out in about five minutes. But we have a meeting set on Monday. Okay, beautiful. And before I go to a vote, make a motion for a vote today, art pieces. We have the, in Councilman Coffin's ward, I believe he has the majority of the arts district in Ward Three. How is it that you all propose to tie in a lot of the cultural art that's in the downtown as well? Because we have a lot of studios that I believe, you know, they would love to bring some of their art and put it on display...
We would love to do, we were talking about that.
To have, you know, the art, the, you know, of course, the fresh produce and things of that nature, really tying in a lot of the, the culture that's around the community.
First Friday.
You know, a lot of the products that they sell out at First Friday, I think that would be a great tie.
And the Valley Book Fair, we could do as a stopping ground for meetings and poetry readings. All of those things are the things that I think that that building, it's such a beautiful building, with the copper and the windows and the openness of it and the parking. It's just a beautiful central building. And if you ever look at the Abarcadero in San Francisco, you'll see that the tower is the, we put that on the, on our logo, on the Downtown Third logo, it's the clock tower. And it represents the meeting place. So it really is special, very special.
And let me say this from a First Friday perspective, because we've gotten involved in that project recently. That's one of the reasons we're excited about it, to be on a Friday to start off with, because we are going to get some artists, and Carrie doesn't know that yet, who, before First Friday starts, will be taking a, you know... A little bit. Yeah, she's got a few surprises in store for her.
I love it. It's great.
But you're right, Councilman Barlow, there's a definite need to tie everything together.
Hang artwork, all of it.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to belabor the issue. This was supposed to be a quick City Council afternoon session. So I hear them down there coughing and clearing their throats, but this is, but this is great. And Carrie, thank you so very much, and Todd, thank you as well. And with the council's permission, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation of approval of this item, subject to all conditions.
Okay, we have a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, another reason to come downtown.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Yes, it's great. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you.
Everyone.
We've got some applause on that one, all right. Okay, we will go back now to item number 45, ZON41006, a bay inside and rezoning, public hearing, applicant owner, Charleston Ranch Show LLC requests for rezoning from CD Design Commercial to C1 Limited Commercial on .72 acres at 2324 West Charleston in Ward One. Councilwoman Tarkanian, the planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Yes, thank you. Councilmembers, Bob Genzer, Genzer Consulting, Las Vegas, Nevada, on behalf of the applicant. We want to thank staff and the planning commission for their recommendation of approval. As you may recall, I was here about two months ago when this item was, was placed back on the agenda. At that time, Councilwoman Tarkanian asked us to hold a neighborhood meeting, so we abated until today in order to do that. We did conduct that meeting last Wednesday evening. There were a few of us there. However, no one from the public actually showed up. Hopefully, that's a sign that all the questions have been answered, and I'm going to cut it very short with that. I would simply request your approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the City Council? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to be heard? Come on down, sir, and tell us who you are.
Hi.
Okay, yeah, all right. It's a different item. Very good. Okay, anybody on this item, item number 45? Okay, seeing none, I close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
We did not receive in our office any comment. We only had three who were against the proposal, and we spoke with them later so they could understand some of the things I'm going to be saying now. My motion is going to be based upon the following facts. The proposed C1 limited commercial zoning is consistent with the land use designation identified in the Rancho Charleston Special Area Plan, which came out in June of 2002. And if there's anybody in that area that ever wants one of these, contact our office and we'll help you get it. I've given out some already. Please note that this land use designation applies only to the area encompassed by this shopping center property at the northwest corner of Charleston and Rancho. It does not apply to the rest of the Charleston corridor, which is designated for one-story office use. So I wanted to make very clear that because this backs up to the commercial center where Smith's Market is, and because in the planning, which I wasn't here on the council at the time, but I was told that they had input from the citizens, that this corner would be able to be the commercial along with Smith's Market and all the rest of that large block. The C1 district is intended for less intense commercial uses, such as personal service, office, and limited retail uses. And the city's records show that it should be located at the intersections of primary and secondary thoroughfares, which of course is the case in this instance. This property does not abut to any residential properties. It's surrounded by other commercial uses with Charleston in the front. No modifications are proposed in this application to the existing building. Any significant changes to the building or property would require the review of a site development plan application at a public hearing here in the council, so that what we have now is what we keep, and if they want to change it in any way, it would have to come here again and be approved by the council. Any proposed uses shall be required to conform to the parking requirements for that use, eliminating more intense commercial uses. I wanted to put that in the record so people would understand why that particular law could have the C1 designation. It was something that was recommended by the group that worked, the city that worked on that plan, the Rancho Charleston Plan, and it was even in effect around that time, and it has been till now. So there's already a two-story building there. Nobody's building a two-story building. It's one that exists, and they wanted the C1 because it lets them take in medical offices that have all different types of designations. But again, if anybody in the future wanted to change that, to do something other than the office-like complex they have now, they would have to come back to the council in front of another public meeting, where everybody would have their input, and the council would vote again. And I do that because I know that this is a very, very interested and involved community, and I want to make sure that that information's in the record. So I move to approve.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 46 has been withdrawn. Item number 47 has been held in abeyance. Item number 48 through 50 has been held in abeyance. So now we get to item, item 51 and 52. 51 is a variance 43728, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow 84 parking spaces where 111 parking spaces are required. Item number 52, SDR 43726, for possible action on a request for a site development plan reviewed to add a 6,036 square foot second story to an existing medical office building for a total height of 32 feet with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffering requirements, to allow zero feet along the east, west, and south property lines where eight feet is required. The applicant owner is Scenic Vistas LLC. The project is located on 1.26 acres at 2905 and 2809 West Charleston Boulevard. Planning commission recommends approval, and staff recommends denial of both items. The items are in Ward One. Councilwoman Tarkanian, and our public hearing, which I now declare open, is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the, I'll go ahead and have the applicant go, go ahead and do your presentation.
Okay.
Are all of you the applicant?
No, just myself. I'm actually the architects and the builders and what have you, so...
Okay, so you're the only one representing the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, and your name, please?
Elaine Copel.
Okay, go right ahead.
So I'm basically the owner of the two properties right now. I'm a physician that's actually in Ward One, right across the street from where the two properties are right now. I'm renting space from Robiero Company, basically, that's there. What I want to do in, with this property is basically turn it into a multimodal clinic to be able to treat pain patients. A little bit about myself, I did my training at Johns Hopkins, and I decided to come set up practice here after I graduated. And what I saw was that there was a little bit of disconnect between some of the medical services that are provided in Las Vegas versus the large university setting. So my goal was to try to set up something very similar to what we have at Johns Hopkins and at other major institutions like the Mayo Clinic, Leibniz Clinic, UCSF, UCSD. And in order to do so, I basically need space to be able to encompass all the physicians required to comprehensively treat spine pain patients in one building. The, what we basically need is the space to be able to house an in-house MRI, an in-house surgical center, as well as enough space to be able to have four physicians on staff, which would be basically physiatrist, neurologist, surgeon, and a pain management physician. So when people come in, it's one-stop shopping, where they can see everybody at one time. The physicians are able to communicate with each other regarding a particular patient as opposed to the way kind of the Las Vegas model is now. You see one physician, he'll refer you out to another one, therapy's at a third place, the surgical center's a fourth place, MRI at a fifth place, and so on. So I believe a lot of the communication breakdowns that, that go on when the system is like that kind of lead to basically less and optimal care in terms of medicine. So what we're planning to do right now is combine, there's two buildings on the property right now that, that were in foreclosure that we bought. And we want to remodel both buildings and add basically an extra 6,000 square foot to one of the buildings on the second floor, in order to be able to expand the clinic portion of, of what we do. And these are the, the actual two buildings right there, that you can see on the screen.
Okay, anybody in the City Council have questions of the applicant? Okay, this is a...
Yes, yes, I do.
The applicant?
Yes, I do. I've received quite a bit of email from, I'm assuming, a lot of residents in, in the area. But the question that I have yet to find out, and I would like to pose that, is, did you host a neighborhood meeting?
We did. So the, the original meeting was set up by the city, and it was around a little bit before Thanksgiving. Unfortunately, one person showed up to it. And then we made a, we were made aware that there was going to be a community meeting at the local elementary school that we should attend. So we actually went to the community meeting, I believe it was last week, on, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday. And there was a large turnout from the community there, and we did a presentation as to why we wanted to do what we wanted to do and what we wanted to do.
And from your feedback at that meeting, and I wasn't there, so I'm just, you know, asking your position, what was the feedback that you received as it relates, as it related to your project?
Basically, the feedback was that do not want a two-story building in that area, in that property.
And was there an alternative? Was there suggestions that were brought forward as far as...
Not really, basically, just not, to be, kind of paraphrasing, they don't want it in the neighborhood. There's, there's that zoning, I think, thing that's been there that you can't do a two-story building on Charleston between Campbell and Vallevee for some time now. So I, basically, it was just them to tell me that they don't want a two-story building there, for a variety of reasons.
And from your understanding, was there any feedback as it relates to, you know, what the community would consider? Basically, just saying no to the project, was there any other recommendation as far as what they would consider to embrace what you're looking to bring into the community?
They wanted to know if I'd be able to do it with the, the two, the buildings that are there as they stand now. And I basically explained to them, unfortunately, because of the square footage that's required for a surgical center for an MRI and for the appropriate amount of physicians, that with 1,300 square feet, it's, it's impossible, basically, to build that type of vision on, on that, that area. You basically need the square footage in order to properly house the physicians, the staff, and be able to have the patients accommodated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
And with your permission, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Sir, do you own this property?
Yes.
And when did you buy the property?
About four months ago.
Okay, so you bought it four months ago in its current state. Have you been operating your business out of this building?
No, we've been waiting for, to go through the appropriate channels, because this is the, kind of the vision I had. So we started out first with the planning commissions and just kind of worked our way through that.
I guess what I'm trying to get to is that, and I, and I respect what you're doing, sir. You're probably providing a very, very valuable service to a lot of patients. But what you want to do is you want to bring in that kind of business to an area that is surrounded by a lot of residential people. And I would have, would have thought maybe that you would have done a little bit more checking to see if what your plans were, were going to be amenable to the neighborhood before purchasing the property.
No, I, I understand that is, is essentially, I want to work in that neighborhood. I'm a Hispanic physician, and I want to be in an underserved area, which, that area services. And unfortunately, I don't want to set up clinic in Henderson or in Summerlin, where most of these physicians are now starting to go to. I actually, this is the area I want to be in. It's next to a major, the only academic center here, University Medical Center, several Valley View Hospital and what have you. And to be honest with you, when I looked up and down the street, and I even brought pictures, there's multiple buildings that are two stories already, and within one mile of that building, at least, at least 10 of them. One of them, we just talked about immediately before this, I know it's, it's a different zoning, but there's the Montessori School that's two stories. There's a dentist office that's two stories. There are several other buildings that are two stories. So, you know, honestly, I didn't realize that there was going to be this much opposition to it, just because, you know, I, I saw these two stories within a mile.
Are you new, are you new to Las Vegas?
Yes. I, I mean, I trained at University of Chicago, then I went to Johns Hopkins, then I moved to Las Vegas. But I grew up originally in Mexico, and then I came to the US to Arizona, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we're going to have the public hearing issue. Before I do that, though, myself and the mayor received about 50 letters and emails in opposition to this. I just received another stack today, and I believe everybody in the City Council has received those also. So just out of curiosity, a show of hands, how many people are here in the audience in opposition to this? Okay. I'm hoping every single one of you are not planning on speaking, correct?
No, not.
Well, you, you can. Every single one of you can, if you'd like. What, what I'm, I'm hoping is, you three gentlemen, I'm assuming, are here to speak in opposition?
Oh.
No. Oh, you three are here in support?
They're actually, in case you guys have questions about the projects, the contractors and what have you.
Okay, all right. So we'll have you go first. And then what I would hope is that a couple of three that are in opposition would be able to come up here, because the letters are very, very clear on what the opposition is. So if it's possible to have a couple of three, sounds like you may be one of them, to come up and, and give your side. And I think we'll have a complete understanding from that, and that will allow Councilwoman Tarkanian to make her motion and us to vote. So that's what I'm hoping happens. So go ahead. You three gentlemen, you're here in favor of the item. Go ahead and speak.
Mayor Protem, before you speak, sir, also, if, if you don't mind, I just, I'm curious as to know if, in fact, there's anyone here that's also in support of the item. I think that would be, that lives in the community as well.
Anybody else that lives in that area that is in favor of this item?
Okay.
Okay, I don't see any hands up. Okay, all right, gentlemen, go ahead, you three.
My name's Dustin Balinski. I'm here with the doctor. I just wanted to make one point...
Get, state your name, sir.
Dustin Balinski.
Thank you.
I just want to make one point, and that is that the current and the proposed use will be the same in the area. Just the, just the site development that's taking place is changing.
Thank you. Sir?
My name, my name is Bert Craig. I'm here with the doctor. Part of the agreement for the building to do this with, with staff would be to remap the area, to bring it into compliance about the setbacks between the two buildings. So we are in the process of getting that remapped.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thanks. Of any of the technical advisors here, if I might call you that. The, the height angle, the, the visual angle from the rear of the property...
Yes, sir.
Is a certain angle, it's a certain acute angle.
One to three.
And of course, it gets pretty high. It could go two-story all the way back to the existing building, and even further back. So my question is, is, and I never received anything from you in advance of this meeting to possibly offer some alternatives unless you just felt you needed to see where you stood with the existing proposal, because the angle's very important. I mean, I, my own personal residence is on... important. I mean, I, my own personal residence is on Las, virtually the same distance from Las Vegas Boulevard as this, this, these homes are from Charleston. So, I'm very aware of the side angle, how important that is to a resident, even from their backyard. Uh, if that, is that all you have in your inventory so far as what you've submitted to the city? You haven't given any other alternatives to us, for us to at least study and try to apply our noodles to see if we can't help some, find some solution?
Yes, sir. We, we have not submitted any additional material. This does meet the height to adjacent residential property setback requirement, and it does indicate that on the overall site plan. We have had some input as to some changes that could be made. Uh, this project is something that we definitely want to have an answer on, and that's why we haven't chose to stretch it out over the next six, eight months. Uh, we, we are open to any suggestions. We're, we're adamant about eventually getting what we want here that would also appease the neighbors, uh, if we have to come back.
But you, you just got to be careful how you just phrased that.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, rephrase that so that you would say something to the effect, maybe you're adamant in getting along with the neighbors.
Well, we are, no, we are, we are adamant with appeasing the neighbors. However, unfortunately, we weren't able to garner enough information from the neighborhood early enough. Our meeting happened to fall around the holidays. Uh, and so, we've got a lot invested into what we're doing right now. And so, that's why we're moving forward at this point.
Okay, I, I certainly will listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, looks like a couple of individuals are going to come up and speak in opposition to this. Again, if, if they have represented you well, then that's great. Anybody else who would like to come down and also make their comments, you have the right to do that under public comment. So, uh, we'll go ahead and get started. And please, when you come up here, state your name and tell us what you think. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. My name is Brett Birdsong, and I am the president of the McNeil Neighborhood Association. Um, I, I'm sure that most of you on the council are aware of our neighborhood. I hope some of you have been down to visit it. It is a lovely area just west of Rancho and just south of Charleston. It is one of the old, high-quality neighborhoods in Las Vegas. Uh, some of the letters that the Mayor Protem responded to have come to you from residents of 20, 30, 40, even 60 years in our neighborhood. It is a special place. It is unique to Las Vegas. It is one of the few high-quality, larger-lot neighborhoods close in to the city, and it's exactly what this council has been working hard to try to make a livable downtown area.
Excuse me one second. Why don't you gentlemen have a seat? Thank you.
And so, I'm the one who dropped off the sheaf of letters and emails that, that you've probably been receiving in trickles over the last few weeks, but I wanted you to have them all in one place. And I really encourage you to read them because they are a testament to, to the, the wonderful folks in our neighborhood and to the value of protecting these great neighborhoods. I do have just a couple of things that I wanted to speak about before, before asking a couple of other folks to come up here. Um, the one-story height restriction along Charleston between Rancho and Valley View is really the most important thing to preserve the character of our neighborhood. And it was something that was long in the making, and it's very dear to us, and has been something that our neighbors have battled over for years and years. In fact, this council, uh, back around the turn of the century, around 2001, 2000, actually realized the value of, of these inner-city neighborhoods around the Rancho-Christen area, and they commissioned a study, a land-use study and strategic plan for the Rancho-Christen area. One of the findings of that plan, which was, or that strategic, uh, study, which was adopted unanimously by the council, was that these neighborhoods really need to be protected against commercial encroachment. And the result of that planning process ultimately was an ordinance which limited those, uh, those, uh, buildings, uh, that weren't already two stories, and there are only a, a small handful of them, uh, none adjacent to this particular building. But the ordinance to limit all of, all of, uh, these to one story or 20 feet. And there are a couple of second-story buildings that are burrowed in. They dug out so that they could still meet the 20-foot restriction because the first story is essentially underground. Um, and that is really what we are here to protect. And what I would ask of you, today's member of the council, and some of you I'm sure were on the council back then, is to vote to support the policies that you adopted back when that plan was, uh, what was accepted unanimously by this council. Protect the neighborhoods as you said you would because we don't have a homeowners' association, we don't have CCNRs, we have the zoning laws, and we have political representation. And this is all that stands between us and having one of Las Vegas' greatest neighborhoods just slide toward decline because of over-commercialization and density and cut through traffic and, uh, visual impacts from that. So, uh, so, so we are not here at all trying to stop commercial development. In fact, one of the things that a number of our neighbors expressed to Dr. Capel at the meeting last week, and there were about 80 neighbors at that meeting, one of the things that was expressed is, please come and invest in these properties in Charleston. But invest in properties that are big enough to do what you need to do for your business within the existing guidelines that he either knew about or should have known about when he bought this property. So, I don't want to hold the floor too long, but I do ask this council to vote today to uphold the policies, the land-use policies that really are there to protect these neighborhoods in which I, in which I think you very rightly adopted a, a few years back. Second, I just wanted to point out that this isn't a situation where, where someone had owned this property for a long time and was surprised by, by these regulations. This property was bought out of foreclosure within the last year. Dr. Capel could have and should have investigated the zoning before making the investment. We would be happy for him to invest in other properties right on along that stretch that, that would accommodate his facility, um, in, in, in a way that's in compliance with, with our plans. Lastly, before I bring up Judge Mosley and I, and, and Mike McDonald is also here, a former council member, and I wanted to make sure they had a chance to, to speak because they've been involved in these long battles, and I'm a little bit of a newer face around town, having been there for only 12 years. Uh, the last point I wanted to make is that this really is the biggest issue that I have encountered in our neighborhood, the most galvanizing issue in our neighborhood over the time that I've been there. And, uh, when I walked into that meeting, uh, last week and I saw 80 people there to stand up in support of the neighborhood, uh, I was really moved by that. And I frankly have been very moved, and I hope you are too, by all of these emails and letters.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So, Judge Mosley?
Judge Mosley, come on up.
Mayor Protem, Councilman, Councilwoman, Donald Mosley, 1127 Westland. As was said, this prohibition against two-story buildings was a product of some negotiation, I believe, in 2002. And it's been protected since. And the reasoning behind it, as Councilman Coffin indicated, one, so we would prevent, prevent people from looking through, out the back of these two-story buildings into someone's backyard. That was certainly a consideration. Another was to eliminate what could be said to be condensed use, where you have such traffic congestion in mornings and evenings particularly. And an adjunct to that, having people park in the yards, in front, front yards of people in the neighborhoods, because there's never enough parking, it seems, for these two-story or these condensed uses. So, that was the reasoning behind this, and it's still a valid concern. And of course, as we all know, if this is approved, it's just a matter of time before the rest of them down the street asks for the same thing, and we'd be hard put to deny that since the, the same rationale would have climbed. I've said many times that I don't want Charleston to become a Sahara. And that is a prospect, it's, it's a possibility. And this is the kind of thing that would lead us to that situation. I'd like to see the commercial interest be compatible with the neighborhood. And I think we have struck that balance. I'd ask you to maintain that. As was said, I, I believe, and I guess I'm not particularly objective about it, but I believe the Scotch 80s, McNeil, Rancho Circle, and those neighborhoods in that area represent the best established neighborhoods in the city of Las Vegas. I'd like to have your assistance in maintaining that. And I would say in closing, because I don't want to be lengthy here, one of the applicants said, "What about a suggestion? Can we have some suggestions?" I'd like to ask the rhetorical question, what happened to the medical center concept, the medical park by UMC? We had a gigantic area mapped out there in the late 90s, I believe, where these medical facilities were supposed to congregate, and now they're scattered all over Charleston and Rancho and wherever you happen to find them. I don't know what happened to that concept, but I was much, much in, in support of it. And if he wants a suggestion, he might go over there and see if he can't purchase a building in that area. Is there any question?
Mayor Protem, may I please? I can't resist the opportunity. I just can't. For 30 years, I've appeared in front of you when you've got the microphone and I'm standing like you.
You know, Mary Goodman said the same thing a few years ago.
I've got 100 questions for you. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. No, in all seriousness, this is a little off-base, but I just want to congratulate you. I know you're retiring very soon after 34 years as a judge in this community. I know it has nothing to do with this item, but I couldn't resist the opportunity to congratulate you and thank you for your service, Judge Mosley.
That's very kind of you. And you might not get too used to this situation because I understand you might be moving somewhere very soon, you think? Possibly.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next.
Good afternoon. Dirk Ravenholt, 1223 Westland, 2805 Mason, 2428 Mason. Uh, I have a vested interest in this neighborhood. As you know, I've been here 50-plus years in Las Vegas. Uh, I, I, I see a problem with this particular project in that not only is the height level a problem, but we're asking for the other items, reduction from 111 parking spaces to 84, the reduction from eight feet to zero feet, the lack of any forethought in, um, landscaping to go around this building. It's, it's a square peg in a round hole. It just doesn't fit. And, uh, I, I, I agree with my neighbors that the two-story height is a huge problem, but, you know, the requirements, and I, I, I see that word is used in the ordinances, but it's being asked to just be neglected here. If you are going to put a facility on the piece of property, you have to abide by the requirements. And now, we're going to have a rather large cement structure with no landscaping, inadequate parking to begin with, uh, two-story, which will start the wedge. And the wedge will allow for other facilities to come in and say, "Well, look, there are other two stories. You approved this one back in 2012, and we want you to approve our two-story." And you're going to end up on a sliding slope that's not going to be advantageous for this old neighborhood. Uh, many of us have been there for years and years and anticipate that this is a quaint area. It needs to remain in its character, and I ask that you do not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Caleb Brooks. I live at 2700 Ashby Avenue, but I wanted to speak, I, I feel that McNeil Association has represented me as a homeowner. However, I also own property on Charleston, um, two commercial properties, 3615 and 3607. When I first looked at buying them, my thought was, oh, this is perfect for us. We can use it, and then when we leave, we can sell it and build a big thing and make a lot of money. Very quickly, I learned that that is not possible because of the, the ordinances and not being able to build, um, which was great for us. The more we thought about it, the more it was attractive to us because my wife, who's a psychiatrist, was looking for that type of smaller building. We have a tenant in the other one who also appreciates having that freestanding, small building. Um, so I just wanted to say, as a business owner there, while I, I feel the pain of the, the current owner who thought he could do this, there are businesses who appreciate the freestanding, smaller buildings as well. It's not just the residents who object. There are business owners who appreciate the style of that street, the fact that there is traffic between buildings, that there's ample parking, that each business can be seen as you drive along. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, Chuck Thompson, 1245 Strong Drive. I've been in Las Vegas, I would say, probably longer than most of you are old, except for you, Lois. Uh, but I'm just finishing my 71st year in Las Vegas, and I wasn't born here. So, I've been raised in this town, in all aspects of this town. It was a thrill for me to buy in McNeil about 25 years ago. I could have afforded more, but I wanted the neighborhood. I liked the neighborhood. I'd worshipped it for years. Now, I've sat back and watched it kind of be clipped away. Good God, Oki's been taken away from us for half the last three years with orange cones. We got houses in there, even though I've taken to Lois, I love her and I know she's done her best, but are burnt out and can't be repaired, or won't be repaired. We've got attacks from the west, where these, such are the north, where these buildings are coming in. And all I ask is, please, just give us what we asked for. Deny this. Leave us feel free to come in without all kinds of cross-foot traffic, with all kinds of, without all kinds of parking, that is, driving down the streets. You've changed the neighborhood enough as it is. And I just, I support denial of this application. I'm not going to throw my usual bombs today that I'm known for dropping, but I do ask for your help, age, and encouragement because we take great pride in that neighborhood. We take great pride in that neighborhood. And we have a summer picnic outside. There's hundreds of people there. It's a group. That's why you'll see this response. It'd be twice as much if people didn't have to work today. These are mostly working people. So, I want you to know this is serious to us, and I just ask for your encouragement and help keeping our neighborhood the way it is.
Thank you, sir. Next. Yes, ma'am.
I am another one that opposes-
Please state your name and speak right into the microphone.
My name's Marnette Rachel, 2601 Gilmary Avenue. I moved to McNeil Estates 12 years ago, but I'm a native Lasvegan. I don't know if you're familiar with the old Mayfair Houses, but they were a nice, neighborly neighborhood when I was growing up, and they aren't so much anymore. One of the reasons I oppose this is the height requirement. Another reason is the parking. My mother went to the hospital emergency last year, and the doctor, when he came, he said there'd be about 25 people, 25 cars maximum for staff and doctors. And he said, so that'd leave a little over 50 cars, parking spaces for cars and stuff. In my mother's case, my brother-in-law, my five siblings, a couple of grandchildren, and, uh, my aunt and her daughter all came and visited. So, you had about 10 cars at Valley Hospital for that whole day because we were there. If people are in this pain management, you're not going to see just one car per person or two cars per person, especially if they're in some sort of surgery. It backs up onto one of the nicest little streets in Las Vegas, and that's Ashby Avenue. And you're going to see cars parked all over there. It's not a good thing for our neighborhood. We don't oppose, as far as I know, the medical community coming in. We did, we told the doctor, "No, we'd love to have you, but we don't want the height. We need you to have all your parking, not a 25% difference." I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. State your name and speak right into the microphone.
Yes, uh, my name is Gil. I live on 921 C3, uh, on 9th Street. I don't know, I need a goodbye from Councilman. I have a problem with, you know, Las Vegas Water Company. Somebody's sneaking in middle of 9, open a mill.
Okay, are you here to speak on this particular agenda item?
Pardon me?
Yeah, it, it, it sounds like you need to speak during public comment. We're on a specific agenda item.
Yes, that is. What a authority, what a company.
Okay. Would, Scott, you want to help her and make, make sure she speaks on the correct agenda item? Thank you. Mr. Scott here is going to help you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Scott. What did I say, Mr. Scott? Mr. Scott.
Before the former council member speaks, I just, I forgot to submit to the clerk just a few extra things. I know we've papered you to death and electroned you to death, but here are a few more that we would, just wanted to go on the record. Some folks who signed a petition who were at the neighborhood meeting, a couple of emails I got this morning, and a list of some of the folks who are here from our neighborhood. And I might just ask them to wave their hands from the McNeil neighborhood.
Yeah, great. Thank you for coming down, and you've been represented very well. Thank you. Okay, Mr. McDonald, you state your name, please.
Thank you, honor. Michael McDonald, 2520 Pinto Lane, Las Vegas, Nevada, Ward 1. We're also president of the Pinto Palomino Neighborhood Association. Along with me tonight is Eric King, Vice President, and members in the audience from our association as well. I do apologize for appearing this way without a suit and tie. I went to the doctors, and I felt it important to make it here to support our neighbors. That said, again, I apologize for appearing you for the way I do. The most important thing is to look at what this city has built on, your predecessors, and what you stand for. Without the neighborhoods, the city is nothing. I know we're in hard times right now, and people try to use that as an excuse to come into certain, build in certain areas, but that doesn't, that doesn't really bank on what we're about. The city of Las Vegas has always been about neighborhoods because without the neighborhoods, there really is no city. Every time you guys go in the neighborhoods, you talk about saving the neighborhoods, fighting for the neighborhoods, and you've done it. You stood behind your ward. I was a sponsor of the ordinance that said, "We want to make it one-story, not two-story" on Charleston. We have been fighting, Councilman Hawkins was fighting prior to me, to keep this neighborhood intact. And when we talk about this neighborhood, we're talking about from the freeway to Sahara and up, from Martin Luther King up. We try to come together in any type of, any type of crisis to show that we are a united We ask you, please listen to our councilwoman. Please listen to our neighbors. It's a bad thing when a person comes into a neighborhood and tells them what's going to be good for their neighborhood. We know what's good for our neighborhood. We do welcome the doctor. We had a very spirited meeting. We thank him for him and his associates showing up, but we spoke with one loud voice. We set a precedent years ago. We asked our councilmembers and our mayor to stand by us and always make sure that you fight for us because we will fight for you. And that's why we're here today. We're asking you, please, stand up for the neighbors. Continue our fight. Continue our associations. We're bound together by words and by heart of the middle of the city. Many developers have tried to come in because these are large acre estates and smaller neighborhoods. They tried to come in and divide us. They have never been able to do that. And look at the history of it. Councilman Hawkins, myself, Councilwoman Tarkanian, and all the mayors and representatives that have come out of there. Time and time again, people come in and keep trying to change our neighborhood, and we're down here. We may be small in numbers, one at a time, two at a time, but I think when you look at it, we're sitting here with one loud voice. We're bringing petitions tonight. Eric King and myself bring in additional 80-plus households saying they do not want this on Charleston. So respectfully, we thank you for hearing us, and we ask that you please deny this application. It is not compatible or harmonious. Once again, it is not compatible or harmonious with our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Mr. Birdsong was talking about the side angle. Does this meet the side angle or does it not? Can somebody tell me?
Do you know that?
Mr. Mayor Protem, in terms of the residential adjacency requirement, which I believe is what Mr. Farlow is asking about, there is a ratio of 1 to 3. That, for example, every 100 feet of building height, it needs to be 300 feet away from the nearest residential property. The applicant has provided a drawing which shows that they do meet the residential adjacency requirement in terms of that setback in the height of the building.
Okay, with that, it does meet that. There isn't any views, and even if there was a view, the views are not guaranteed under Nevada law. It doesn't block the sun. And it's a medical use. Judge Mosley was, stated something about the parking impact, but at the planning commission meeting, the doctor explained that a lot of his patients, in fact, most of them, were going to be brought around to the side because, under the drugs that they use and that, they're not allowed to drive. So they were going to be delivered on the side and then picked up and taken home. That's, that was that. And then, Mr., I don't know what his last, Dirk, he was saying that, that he wanted some more landscaping in this. And the other thing at the planning commission meeting, it says that nonconformity went away with the combining of the two properties. So, all in all, I really do not understand all the opposition. But that being said, that being said, I totally concur with what Mr. McDonald says. Whatever the neighborhood wants, that is what the neighborhood should get because they're the ones with the vested interest. I don't understand the opposition, but...
Thank you.
However the neighborhood wants it, that's the way it should go. And one other thing, Judge Mosley saying that he didn't want Charleston to become another Sahara, but it already is. It really, it really is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to Councilwoman Tarkanian.
First, I want to thank the doctor for holding the neighborhood meeting, patiently listening to the concerns of the individuals who were there, the residents, who had a great amount of passion in their heart. And I know that I, along with the neighbors at that meeting, thought that it would be wonderful to have a pain clinic. But I also need to say, not only listening to what we hear today, but also because Title 19, our Las Vegas Title 19 states, we will not have two stories between Campbell and Valley View. And we have been able to keep that. I think it's important to keep that. And when we have made some changes as far as parking is concerned, and these people would tell us, "Oh, it won't bother you. We won't be taking up that much space," it has turned out that they have taken that much and more. And we have two streets right near there, right parallel to the one involved here, that we have to paint the red sidewalk along in front of the houses. We have to paint it red so we don't have people going to the doctors that are there already and taking up other parking for the people and their families. So I want to say this is a wonderful neighborhood, nationally recognized even, in national publications as one of the types of neighborhoods you would want to have. I understand the passion and concern of the individuals are here. I think they've done a tremendous job in leading what they want to say through Brett Birdsong and also through their own comments, so I move for denial of this and hope that somehow the doctor, who seems to be a very nice person, and the people who work with him, somehow they'll be able to do something else to adjust to get a win-win situation. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Please vote.
I'd like to comment on the motion.
Okay, before we post, Councilman Coffin?
Yeah, it's a troubling thing. It's not all that easy. I'm going to support the motion. And in support of that motion, I want to say that, first of all, thank you to the members of this area. The McNeil people have supported the people in my neighborhood where I live on Fifth Place, up against Las Vegas Boulevard, when the Titanic, a monstrous project, was proposed, which we've had a site angle probably 20 to 1. Or no, maybe 1 to 1, more likely, or less than 1 to 1 at our area, why they came over and helped us. And I will never forget that. But that's, this is not payback for why I would be voting against the proposal. It is because I walked the property. I parked my car there, and I walked around the building and walked over to the backyard of somebody's house and surveyed it, and I understand what they're fighting for. And I understand people who own property on Charleston naturally have paid quite a bit of money for that property, and they'd like to try to get some return on their investment or at least cash to help support the mortgage, et cetera. But I think that they knew when they bought, particularly in this doctor's case, he knew what he was doing when he bought the property. He knew the existing rules, and he needs a quick decision, and it'll be a quick one, I think, today, if I'm guessing correctly. In any event, this neighborhood is truly a treasure, and I value it like I value my own street because you could take all the Mcmansions in Summerlin, and I wouldn't take them all compared to one home on Ashby or a Mason or some of the other blocks in that neighborhood. And they have not tried to keep the public out, you know? Some other neighborhoods, nice neighborhoods, without HOAs, have blocked off streets, have gotten city council help to do that. And McNeil people have never tried to isolate themselves from the city. They've always been part of the town. You can drive up and down those streets anytime you want, and nobody's going to say, "Get off our property." Nobody's going to make you go through a gate. I think this speaks really highly for the public-spirited nature of the people in McNeil. And I used to represent McNeil when I was in the Senate for 10 years, '91 to 2001. And I didn't always get all the votes. There was a lot of partisan difficulty there, but I'll tell you what, I was always treated fairly. And I think they'll always treat us fairly, and they'll treat this doctor fairly as he comes back with a new plan, which I'm sure he's going to need. Thank you very much.
Okay, Beverly, go ahead and post the vote. On item 51, yes. Okay, motion carries, and item number 52.
I move to deny.
Okay, we have a motion. Please vote. Please post. Okay, thank you very much for everyone for coming down here. All right, on to item number 53. This is an RQR 44018, required review, public hearing. Applicant owner, Roxanne Sheridan. For possible action on a request for a required review of a previously approved special-use permit for a 1,088-square-foot accessory structure, Class 1, with a kitchen at 2281 South Pioneer Way, Ward 1. Councilwoman Tarkanian, staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. Is the applicant present? The applicant looks like...
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and state your name.
Roxanne Sheridan, applicant.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I'd like to thank the council for their time today, and I'm just here to request approval and answer any questions if I possibly can.
Very good. Any questions of the applicant from the council? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this item? Is there none? None, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Please vote. Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, and you're on your way.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, item number 54 and 55. SUP 43005, for possible action on a request for a special-use permit for building, maintenance, service, and sales. Item number 55, SDR 43004, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the addition of an existing 4,970-square-foot building to a site containing an existing 4,011-square-foot office with waivers to allow two-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the north perimeter where eight feet is required, and to allow no building articulation or architectural features where required. The applicant is Sequoia Electric, and the owner is Sage Brush Property Ventures, LLC. The project is located at 4485 North Rainbow Boulevard. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of both items. These items are in Ward 4, my ward, and our public hearing, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Good afternoon. Richard Gallegos, 3005 West Horizon Ridge Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant on this matter. And for clarification, Mayor Protem, we have no waivers. We've complied with Title 19 across the board, and essentially with that, we do ask for your approval for both items. I do want to add that we have submitted a list of equipment. We hope you found that acceptable. We would like to make that part of the record. I'd like to submit that at this time.
Thank you.
And be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, any questions from the city council? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Fay, could you read the conditions on this?
Let me go through what are the non-standard conditions, if you don't mind...
Thank you.
Since the list is rather long. The conditions that have been specifically applied to these applications, first, under the special-use permit. Number one, a required review at a public hearing shall be required one year after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, that is, the certificate of occupancy for the building that is partially constructed at the rear of the property. Also, there is a condition that heavy equipment and machinery, including but not limited to tractors, backhoes, dump trucks, tow trucks, bucket or ladder trucks, front-end loaders, semi-trucks, and trailers and similar vehicles, shall not be parked or stored at the subject's site. No equipment that is available for rent shall be stored outside. And then the rest of those are fairly standard conditions in terms of compliance with all city code requirements. Going on to the conditions that are listed under the site development plan review application, all development shall be in conformance with the site plan, landscape plan, and building elevations. No waivers are required or approved as part of this application. Outdoor storage shall be limited to the 2,000-square-foot area at the southeast corner of the site as depicted in the site plan date stamped, October 18th of 2011. The outdoor storage area shall be screened from view from Rainbow Boulevard by a screen device of at least eight feet in height. No equipment that is available for rent shall be stored outside. Another condition is the existing gate shall remain open during business hours. Business hours shall be from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. And then after that point, essentially, those are standard conditions of approval that we have. I might just turn to Mr. Anderson if there's any non-standard conditions that we have relative to public works requirements.
No, the public works requirements are fairly standard.
Okay.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I would just ask the planning director to make sure he's reviewed this list, to make sure there's no heavy equipment on here. I see a dump truck, I see bobcats, I see some other things. I think maybe the planning director might want to take a look at this, just to verify.
So the way, the way the condition is set up is nothing over 10 feet in height and nothing over 10,000 in vehicle weight will be allowed there, correct?
Correct.
And all the items on that list, and I've reviewed it, and Councilman Ross reviewed it also, since this butts up to his ward...
Yes.
All those items will fit within that category, correct?
That's correct. If they do not, they will not be cited then.
Okay. And the building that you have out there, I saw the design for it, it's going to be a nice-looking building.
That's correct. We are going to match it with the existing building in the front as close as possible.
Okay. Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item number 54 with all conditions. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously, and motion to approve item number 55. Please vote. Please post. Okay, good luck. Yes, I'd like to excuse Councilman Wolfson, who had some pressing business elsewhere. Okay, item number 50, item number 56. SUP 43354, special-use permit, public hearing, applicant. Nuevo Recycling, owner, Nevada space, for possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a proposed 26,300-square-foot salvage or reclamation of products' outdoor use from the existing six-foot-tall chain-link fence with barbed wire along the rear property line at 2866 South Highland Drive. This is in Ward 1. Councilwoman Tarkanian, the planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I'll now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon. I'm Patty Belova, Belova Engineering.
Just need to speak up a little bit.
6130 Elton Avenue, here on behalf of Nuevo Recycling. I'm here to accept our staff conditions. We agree with the conditions, and they'll be followed. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from the city council? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll declare it open. Anybody from the public wishing to be heard? Anybody from the public wishing to be heard?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Councilwoman Tarkanian, my problem with the chain-link fence and the barbed wire is that it catches all those plastic bags and stuff, and in a few months, it just looks like a junkyard. I mean, and that's my concern. I mean, this is an appropriate place for it, you know, as far as I'm concerned, and they said that they were going to clean the place up a little bit. But still, it's that chain-link fence, and it's the trash and debris that concerns me more than anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I'd just like to respond and say that that is not her fence, though. That's the property owner's fence, and she's just renting them. But I understand what you're saying. However, I also, when I questioned, it was told that many railroads have that along their tracks.
Correct.
They require the chain-link along their fence, the chain-link fence along their tracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Paul Larson, three-hundred South Forest Street, representing Alan Creel, senior. We, Mr. Creel opposes this use, especially the aesthetic that will be presented by outdoor storage of recycled materials, as well as the chain-link fence. I find myself in agreement with Mr. Farlow as to the aesthetic effect it will be having on the neighborhood, which Mr. Creel and some of the other property owners have gone through great efforts recently to improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And this, we see, is a step in the other direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
If you could help me in that, could you put on the projector, just the previous, show where the railroad tracks are in relationship? We had a film. Oh, okay. This is the back of her building. It faces the railroad track. I do not think that any of the storage, we went through that, I wanted to tell Paul. I can't see where he is now. But anyway, we went through that with the applicant, we went through it with others, and on planning, we discussed it also. The location of this building is at the rear of the other buildings that are on this same large lot. And any of the storage she have would not be, if it's in her lot, her area, should not be seen from the public.
And that is correct. It is at the rear of the property. It's not visible from the street from which it takes access, and again, it should not be visible from public rights.
In fact, if anything were visible, it would only be to people walking the railroad tracks or taking a train. But, and we have told her very strongly to be sure to keep it clean.
Yes, and the intent is, we have an operating plan, which will be submitting to the Health District, Southern Valley Health District, for review and approval, and that includes, definitely includes lidar control. I just wanted to add one more thing, that the material that's being recycled at this facility is source-separated, and plastic bags are not in any way part of the recycling stream. It's mainly metal, ferrous or non-ferrous metal, and cardboard.
So, it isn't really material that would be blown by the wind, but in addition to that, it would be done in an area that would not be seen from the front of the property at all?
There is absolutely no visibility to the back of the building.
I understand the concern about keeping things up, and I urge you, please help the neighborhood that's worked hard, the gentleman whose views were expressed here just a short time ago. When they work hard to clean up an area, as you come in, it's important to help. So, that would be something, and I don't know if we would need to put a condition on that or not, Flynn. I'm throwing this at him unexpectedly.
We do have a condition in place relative to conformance to the minimum standards for salvage and reclamation of products, and there are some, there is some language there relative to maintenance of the property and how they screen themselves for the outdoor use. If there is a concern, one of the things that we can do is we can place a required review upon this, whereby we might review the use after one year of operation to make sure that they are maintaining the property in accordance with how we would expect it to be.
I don't think she would mind that at all. Let's put that condition on, then in one year, it would be reviewed, and if no problems have occurred, then the review, then it can be taken away.
Would that be after starting of operation, or after today's date? Because I expect to start, we'll be applying for building permits first, and of course, Southern Valley Health District.
It would be a year's review. You'd have a whole year. You'd have a whole year to get going, right?
If I might interject, yes, they would have a year. What we would probably do is we would state something to the effect that a required review shall be required one year after the issuance of a business license.
So, you would have a whole year to get the business going and get things in order?
Thank you.
Okay. I move for approval.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote. Please post.
Whoops.
Okay, motion carries unanimously.
I didn't know if the gentleman, were you speaking on this topic?
Yeah.
You won, you won.
We agreed, any condition you guys put in. So, I see they already passed, so, thank you.
Very good. Congratulations.
Okay. As Oscar would say, take it while you have it, right?
Okay, item number, okay, item number fifty-seven. SUP four-three-six-eight-five, special use permit, public hearing, applicant Denny's, Inc., owner FAEC Holding, Rurula LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed sixty-three hundred square foot supper club at four-five-zero Fremont Streets, suite number one-nine-five, Ward Five. Councilman Barlow, planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I'll declare it open. Is the applicant present?
Representative of the applicant is Matthew Dusha, four-hundred South Rampart. On behalf of Denny's, we would just ask for, to follow staff's and planning commission's recommendation.
Very good. Any questions from the city council? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor Protem. I move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Okay, we have a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Good luck on this, what are they, slam dunks, or?
Grand slams.
Grand slams, yes. Grand slams at the Neapolis.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, item number fifty-eight. SUP four-three-seven-zero-eight, special use permit, public hearing. Applicant Cashman Field, N., owner Pantheon, one-one-zero-one Las Vegas LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a hotel residence used within an existing hotel at one-one-zero-one North Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward Five. Councilman Barlow, planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I'll declare it open. Is the applicant present?
I am. Noah Grassi, I'm the owner of the property.
Okay, anything you wish to add?
The conditions have been met on the property, and just looking for approval.
Very good. Any questions from the city council? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to be heard from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor Protem. Thank you so very much. How many units are we looking at, at this location?
We have forty.
Forty? And talk to me in relation to what your plans are for revitalizing this property, because no one has met with me as it relates to this site.
Okay, yeah, we renovated the property from ground up, so I don't know if you've had a chance to get by and take a look at it, but I guess you haven't, because it's, it looks really, really good. So, it's stabilized, it's a hundred percent occupied, and...
And it's a hotel?
Well, it's a, we're trying to create a longer-term, more stable use for the property. Our tenants that we found, we found that our tenants want to stay longer-term, so...
So, is it a weekly?
It's, well, it's zoned as a weekly. But we want to be able to have people stay for longer. That's the idea, not have to pay the tax.
So, motel?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we found that we've created a lot of stability, that people want to stay. It's a great atmosphere, and, you know, people don't want to have to move out after a week, or a day, or what have you. So, we want to be able to lease for a year, six months, or to a year, for the folks in there. We've got a lot of people in there that are on fixed income, and it's a great property.
Okay, so then, Flynn, help me out with this. Would that fall under the category of an apartment?
No, it actually doesn't. As is advertised in the heading, it falls under the category of a residence hotel, is what we define it as in the zoning code.
On the zoning code?
Yes, and so that does allow a longer-term stay than a standard hotel or motel. And it does already have cooking facilities in place, so it does accommodate that.
Okay, and as far as any issues, as far as variance or setbacks, they've met all of those?
In terms of the use, yes, they do comply with the standards for the use.
So, there's no area of concern from staff?
No.
Okay. All right, well, good luck to you. I'll move to follow staff's recommendation of approval, subject to all conditions at this location.
Okay, Councilman Coffin has a comment?
Thank you, applicant. Have you had any objections from your neighbors immediately adjacent to the building to the north?
To the north, no. That's, see, the, that's not the cemetery, the, what business is that?
Well, those were the ones I was talking, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, no.
The cemetery is quiet.
Yes.
All right, fine. Just checking. You didn't go see the councilman on this in advance, and you've got to visit the councilman.
You include everyone in public comment, huh? Okay, good. All right, we have a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. All right, congratulations. Okay, items number fifty-nine through sixty-one. Number fifty-nine, SDR four-three-seven-zero-two, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for three existing modular buildings totaling seven thousand six hundred and sixty square feet at an existing animal hospital clinic or shelter with outside pens. Number sixty, SUP four-three-seven-zero-three, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a cemetery mausoleum for animals and an existing animal hospital clinic or shelter with outside pens. And item number sixty-one, SDR four-three-seven-zero-four, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for two proposed buildings with a total floor area of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-five square feet and existing animal hospital clinic or shelter with outside pens. The applicant is the Animal Foundation, and the owner is the City of Las Vegas. The project is located on eight-point-three-nine acres at six-five-five North Mojave Road. The planning commission and staff recommend approval on all three items. These items are in Ward Three. Councilman Coffin, our public hearings, which shall now declare open. And this says I need to turn to Mr. Fag, Mr. Fag first, so you want to go first? Because I see Ms. Lazovich is here, so I don't care who goes first.
I didn't actually have anything to add to the record, but one of the things I will state is that the applicant has approached us and requested a longer period for completion of the project. Typically, our standard period for site plan, special use permits, variance is a two-year period for them to exercise the entitlement, and they have requested a three-year period. Staff would be supportive of that change, and that would be a change to the conditions that are applied to items number sixty and sixty-one.
Okay, Ms. Lazovich, anything you'd like to add?
Sure. Good afternoon, Jennifer Lazovich, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road, here today representing the Animal Foundation. I am here pro bono. I am a supporter of the efforts of the Animal Foundation to find good homes for all of our four-legged friends. I would be happy to answer any questions. Just briefly, the idea with items sixty and sixty-one is to build an additional new building that would be located in this area. It would house the cat adoption, the office, and the Pima Medical Group, which has been in modular buildings out along Harris Avenue for some period of time. We obviously need to raise the money to do this, and then construct it. And the other component is that we would like a use permit to do a mausoleum for pets and people who may want to have their pets' ashes stored in this location, and it would be right about in this area. We do agree with all of staff's conditions. We appreciate and would request that you consider a three-year approval instead of two years, because it does take some time to raise the money, and then, of course, build it, and we could use all the time we can get. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the city council?
I do, Mayor.
Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Lazovich, I know the answer to this, but can you tell me, tell the council, who owns the other building on that, on that property?
Who owns it?
Yeah, the other, the existing building there.
Maybe you know an answer that I don't know, if that's a trick question. The existing, the animal, oh, I'm sorry. Can I have the overhead, please?
I guess we're going to do, we're going to get Chris Robinson up here.
Yeah, that was a reason to bring Chris up, obviously. Stumped me, so I got to bring my client up.
Sorry, Ms. Lazovich.
Councilman.
Ms. Robinson.
Chris Robinson, I'm the executive director of the Animal Foundation, and the Animal Foundation owns the buildings on the Animal Foundation campus.
Okay. Then I guess with Mayor Protem and councilman's permission, how is, how is that, that building funded? Can you share that with us, that information? How are you funded?
The organization itself, and the work that we do, is funded approximately in a sixty-forty split between the sixty percent coming from our local government partners, that is, the City of Las Vegas, Clark County, and North Las Vegas, for whom we provide animal services. And then the other forty percent comes from additional fundraising and other fees that we charge for adoption services.
Folks who just do great things in the community, such as Ms. Lazovich, who's helping you out, pro bono on this. And I don't want to take the councilman's steam away from him, but you need some help with the other facilities in there, am I correct?
We do. The campus completion project, as we're calling this, is a, it's approximately twenty-million-dollar project, and we, it includes a whole host of projects in one comprehensive program. It's a, as Ms. Lazovich noted, we're building a new building to house cat adoptions, administration, and our partners, Pima Medical Institute, who we, they provide licenses for veterinary technicians in the community. We're also doing a large renovation to our existing shelter, which is where we house the animals that both your animal control officers and your citizens bring to us under contract, and then a whole campus wayfinding component. And all of those three things, and obviously, that's a shortened version, are about a twenty-million-dollar project. Approximately seven million of that is in the shelter renovation component that we would ultimately like to work with the council and county commission to assist us in that effort, yes.
Okay. Through the mayor, and to Mr. Adams, and the councilman, you know this already, because we share sixty percent, well, the local governments contribute sixty percent to what they do. I think we've had this discussion in briefings before about looking for ways to partner with Clark County, the City of Las Vegas, to help fund some other, the buildings need some work, is what I'm trying to say. And I think, you remember those discussions. I think it'd be probably a good time to revisit that and rebrief the council, if you would, in regards to us helping them revamp the existing structure out there, since most of their clients, I believe, come from the City of Las Vegas and Clark County, and North Las Vegas is the next one in line, but they're certainly financially strapped, as we all are. But I think we really got to take a good look at doing what we can for the years to come for the Animal Foundation and that location.
Yes, sir. Scott Adams, chief urban redevelopment officer. I'll certainly take that message back to our senior executive team in sincerity, and we'll bring something back to you for briefing.
Thank you. Any other comments from the city council? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard?
Mayor Protem, Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Can someone tell me what perpetual care costs for, in the mausoleum?
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear the question.
Perpetual care costs?
For the mausoleum, how much would it cost?
Whatever, I don't know what that is.
When you get a cemetery plot, you can pay for perpetual care, which means the upkeep of the property, and they take that, those funds and invest, and they use the returns from the investment to upkeep the cemetery plot. But mausoleums have that too, I understand.
Yeah. Do you know what, can you answer that?
I can't answer that directly at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The, let me ask Planner Fag a question. We have to, are we okay now with the three years? That is the reason for this, so we don't have to amend. We're okay with that. I am personally, having toured the facility with Councilman Ross just, I think it's September, finding it to be a well-managed and clean facility.
Yes, I think it would be appropriate in this specific instance, based on the type of application and the foundation... of application and the foundation running this, that a three-year approval period would be appropriate. We would need to amend condition number four on item number sixty, and then condition number three on item number sixty-one. So if the motion is to include that, it would be on item sixty and sixty-one.
Okay, so we'll, I'll move for approval on this first item with no amendments.
I'm sorry, could I just ask a question really quick? For consistency purposes, Flynn, the three years should not apply to item fifty-nine, which deals with the modular buildings?
No, because I believe that, you know, all you need to do is essentially get building permits and that's satisfied on the modular buildings.
Understood.
Okay, we have a motion on item number fifty-nine, please vote, please post. Motion carries unanimously, item number sixty.
Well, I'm gonna move to amend and do pass with the language stated as by Planner Fag. I think it was, if he wants to restate the appropriate amendment to this. And the flip side for sixty-one?
Yes, this would be an amendment to condition number four, that this approval shall be void three years from the date of final approval. And then on item number sixty-one, it would be condition number three, to read this approval shall be void three years from the date of final approval.
Okay, fine, thank you. And it is moved with condition number four.
Okay, so we have a motion on item number sixty, please vote, please post. Motion carries unanimously, and item number sixty-one.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move for approval of sixty-one with condition number three.
Thank you. We have a motion, please vote, please post. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
While I was having sport with the applicant on item number fifty-eight and questioning whether or not he pulled the residence immediately north of the motel, the clerk got mad at me because she shut the bar down and didn't let me vote on it. So I'd like to be recorded as having been in favor of that. Okay?
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. Item number sixty-two, EOT four-three-nine-three-one, extension of time, non-conforming, public hearing. Applicant owner, Ronald Sobchik, for possible action on a request for an extension of time of a non-conforming tavern at nine-one-seven Fremont. This is Ward Five, Councilman Barlow, staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name.
My name is Ronald Sobchik. My address is six-oh-seven Santa Barbara Avenue, Fullerton, California.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
I just would like to ask you to approve the extension of time per the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions from the city council? Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, what are your plans for the property?
The, the plan is, right now I'm in negotiations with three parties who want to buy, or who want to lease the property and run the atomic in its, in its current state, eventually to sell it. The reason for the delay in selling the property is we're in the process of remediating an environmental issue from the gas station that's right on the corner of Tenth and Fremont. So I have parties, existing Las Vegas businessmen who already have liquor licenses and whatnot, who want to lease the property, improve the inside of the property, and open it, and run it until such time as the remediation is done, and then buy the property. My parents owned this, owned and ran this business since nineteen ninety-five. They both passed near the end of two thousand and ten, and they left me with the property and whatnot. I'm an engineer, lives in California, really have no desire to pursue running the business myself, but basically we had, we didn't have many offers until just towards the end of this last year, and now I'm in the process of firming up a negotiation. And we sort of ran out of time with the extension of the liquor license and the zoning, and that's the reason for the extension of time.
Right. And Flynn, as far as the extension, this is a two-year extension?
No, this is a one-year extension. That's all we're allowed to do by code.
Okay, then with that being said, I will move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item subject to all conditions, and good luck to you on the sale as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. We have a motion, please vote, please post. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item number sixty-three, EOT four-four-zero-eight-nine, extension of time, non-conforming use, public hearing, applicant Ed Garcia, owner Alta Decatur LLC, for possible action on a request for an extension of time for a non-conforming use tavern at four-six-five South Decatur Boulevard. This is in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, it's called, it's called, is Councilwoman Tarkanian here? Let me make sure she hears this. Thank you. It's a public hearing, I declare open. Applicant is present?
Yes, Matt Becker, Fifty South Jones.
Anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Just ask for your approval of the extension of time.
Okay, any questions from the city council? Okay, hearing none, this is a public hearing, anybody wishing to be heard from the public? Okay, I don't see anyone, so I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Yours is so easy, you see, I just took a little extra time there. I'd like to move for approval with all conditions.
We have a motion?
And good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion, please vote, please post. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Congratulations. Item number sixty-four, AROC four-four-one-oh-one, review of condition, special use permit, public hearing, applicant ETT Service Station LLC, owner Rancho Circle Shopping Center LLC, for possible action on a request for a review of condition of a previously approved special use permit, SUP forty-five-seventy-six, to delete condition number three that states the sale of individual containers of any size of beer, wine coolers, or screw-cap wine is prohibited. All such products shall remain in their original configuration as shipped by the manufacturer. Further, no repackaging of containers into small groups, groups smaller than the original shipping container size shall be permitted at three-three-zero-North, North Rancho Drive. This is in Ward Two, council, no, I'm sorry, this is in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. Is the applicant present?
I'm general manager of the company, George Philpott, five-six-one-six Ambrosia Stream Avenue.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the city council? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Mr. Philpott, for being here today. The request that you're bringing forward today is a request that I cannot support based on a number of issues that I've been working in this area specifically around singles. I do understand that the Seven-Eleven across the street from your location has singles, and, and have been working with Metro as well as some of our code that we've been working in this area. This isn't something that I can support at this time. I will, however, provide you the, the option of tabling this item, should you want to come back, you know, in the future after we work out some of the concerns in this area, or I can move forward with the denial, which will basically allow you to come back a year from now. So those are the options that I would like to present before you today, and, and receive your feedback, if you have any, should you have any.
It's true that the Seven-Eleven across the street does sell singles, and we're a very huge competitive disadvantage. Terrible Herps, ETT, I've been there for several years now, we do our due diligence in not to sell to minors. I think your concern may be regarding the neighborhood itself, and what we're trying to do is to continue to, you know, operate the business at a profit, and we're at a severe disadvantage by not offering the same products that our competitor can. We're a little different, unique to the neighborhood. I've spoken to many councilmen in several seminars. What we do different is very unique, I believe, in the country for not selling to minors, and also making sure our product is in a clear view, so our cashiers can also monitor the products that we sell in the store. So I'd hope for a reconsideration to be able to continue, or to go back and start selling this, the product sold before, because it has definitely impacted our business probably forty-five percent in that location. If you look at that location, what the Herps has done with the beautiful palm trees and the grass and the trees, they're not just a regular convenience store, they're trying to bring something unique to the neighborhood. And we're hoping that we would get able to pass and go back into business again, as our competitors.
So if this is denied, then you can come back a year from now and request the same waiver of the condition. If it's tabled, Beverly, what does that mean?
If it's tabled, they pretty much will have an opportunity to come back less than a year.
Less than a year.
Okay, is there any, and the councilman is asking if you have one in particular you would like?
Well, I guess our decision would be tabled rather than deny it. We'd rather try and get back within a year before, you know, later.
Appreciate it, and you're absolutely right. I mean, what Terrible's has done on this corner has most definitely brought this corner up, and you're actually the example that we've been using for other businesses. However, at the street level, there's major issues as it relates to a lot of the indigent population that has really, you know, turned this corner into something that I believe we can most definitely do better, and we're doing better with the assistance of Metro and our code enforcement. And so you're right, you know, you most definitely have set the benchmark high. However, at this particular time, the great issue that we're dealing with are with single, singles on this corner. And so until I have an opportunity to get my hands around and work out all the issues that surround this particular corner, this isn't something that I'll be able to support today.
Okay.
But I am open to, you know, future conversations.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes?
I just, I understand what Councilman Barlow's saying, and I agree with, he knows his word in each place in it. I just wanted to compliment Herps on the good job you do in keeping minors from buying. You really work hard at it, and you have a great system set up by, I learned it when something went through my ward not too long ago, and I just wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you.
Councilman Barlow, do you have a motion?
Yes, my motion at this time will be to table this item without prejudice.
Okay, we have a motion, please vote. Table, yes, please post. Okay, motion carries. Thank you for coming down, sir.
Okay.
He actually has the next two items.
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, item number sixty-five, AROC four-four-one-zero-two, review of condition, special use permit, public hearing, applicant, Herps Development, owner, Holapie Commons LTD LLC, for possible action on a request for review of condition of previously approved special use permit, to delete condition two that states the sale of individual containers of any size of beer, wine coolers, or screw-cap wine is prohibited at nine-nine-nine-one West Charleston. This is in Ward Two, Councilman Wolfson. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, declare open. The applicant is present. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, I'd like to declare open. Anyone wishing to be heard from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and Councilman Ross will represent Councilman Wolfson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Philpott, I will echo on behalf of Councilman Wolfson. With Councilman Barlow and the Councilwoman Tarkanian, I've already mentioned in regards to the Terrible Herps, has a great business model when it comes to minors drinking or for alcohol use. All of your employees are highly trained and highly skilled, and you take this very seriously. And now, these are words I'm echoing from Councilman Wolfson and from me as well, because you have some of these locations out in my ward. Your standard operational procedure, I understand, is to ID anybody, whether they're buying alcohol or tobacco products, and that's, that's just unheard of, I guess, in today's industry, and you're setting a new standard. With that, Councilman Wolfson would like to follow staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item sixty-five.
Okay, we have a motion, please vote, please post. Motion carries unanimously. Item number sixty-six, AROC four-four-one-oh-three, review of condition, special use permit, public hearing, applicant, owner, Terrible Herps, for possible action on a request for review of condition of a previously approved special use permit, SUP six-one-nine-four, to delete condition number five that states the sale of individual containers of any size of beer, wine coolers, or screw-cap wine is prohibited. All such products shall remain in their original configuration as shipped by the manufacturer. Further, no repackaging of containers into groups smaller than the original shipping container size shall be permitted at one-zero-eight-nine-zero West Charleston Boulevard. This is in Ward Two, Councilman Wolfson. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I'll declare open. The applicant is present. Please state your name again?
George Philpott.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you. Any questions?
Very good. Any questions from the city council? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I'll declare that closed. Councilman Ross will be representing Councilman Wolfson.
Thank you, Your Honor, and likewise, Councilman Wolfson would also like to follow staff's recommendation for approval and move to do so on agenda item sixty-six.
Thank you, please vote, please post. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, we're done.
Okay, good. All right, thanks. Item number sixty-seven, SDR four-two-nine-eight-seven. Oh, we did that one already, thank you, all right. Okay, sixty-eight, like to instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Alrighty. Okay, citizen participation, public comments during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. What do we normally do, three minutes? Okay, so we'll limit it to three minutes. Are there any members of the public who would wish to be heard? And I see a couple folks at the podium. Go ahead and take your turn. Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to give you some candy that I have to sell for bus transportation. My name is Margaret Coleman, and I'm here to speak upon the items fifty-one that was, this was announced December twenty-first, two thousand and eleven, that had concerned funding money given to the general fundings to give back to the public of two million, something like that, plus dollars, that was placed into the city council fundings. First of all, I'd like to say, wake up. God is good, good is God. I'm temporarily at twenty-nine North Twenty-Eighth Street. I'm not Margaret Philip on Rossmore, I'm not Margaret Watson on Duke. They forged my name with HUD and the bank. I'm a homeless victim and suffering due to the lack of the help and interest of the city council. Upon my request, reimbursement, my lien, three billion dollars, that was placed into city council of the mayor, two-point-one-billion-two-thousand-and-one. Item fifty-one was given to you of two million, as I say, plus dollars, December twenty-first, that I was credited and due. It was held back, and it was used for city growth and development without my approval and involvement and knowledge of knowing by Weekly and Barclay, a member of the city council and the board of commissioners. I received no appreciation from no one. I'm at my third stage of coma disease of the arsenic-led poison. Now, two thousand and ten, and two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and twelve, now I'm faced at twenty-nine and twenty-eight, on North Twenty-Eighth Street with a mold disease, bedbug disease. At Park Forest, I'm also faced with illegal lockouts and illegal eviction notices. No one is trying to stop these violations that I brought up on each and every day, due to the lack of interest for my best of interests that was caused by the staff, mayor, of the mayor, council members, and commissioners of the board, NICSIS, and HUD. For over two to thirty years, it was issued my two-point-billion dollars out to and for other benefits usage to be rich. It was issued my two-point-billion dollars out to and for other benefits usage to be rich, richer than rich.
Thank you, ma'am.
Using me and ripping me off.
Okay, thank you very much. Your three minutes are up. We have some other folks that would like to speak also.
But I still like to say these few words about what about my wants and desire, a home, a stability, a standard of living that of my liking, and to help my children.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So I'm saying item eighteen, I still like to speak on item eighteen.
We have some other people that like to speak.
Seventy-five thousand is given to the City Council, and that should be given to me. So I would like to be placed on the agenda.
Okay, very good.
This is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
So if you can contact me, I would appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And put me on the agenda.
Very good. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
I also like to say, I have to use these state alerts because of this disease.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Hassan Joshua Collins. I'm a minister for the Lord Jesus Christ, and just for those that haven't heard the message I preached, I just let people know, obey Jesus, not Satan. Sexual sin and greed leads to hell. Be sober, don't curse, smoke, gamble, or lie. Help the homeless. Jesus was homeless too. Fight corporate greed and be a non-consumer. Boycott those who abuse others in our world. I was arrested for preaching and for sleeping outside. Many Las Vegas police, judges, and officials are guilty of treason per N R S one-ninety-six for failing to uphold good morals and public decency laws as prescribed by N R S Chapter two-oh-one and Las Vegas Municipal Code, Chapter ten. And many tourists and others are supporting this message. I encourage other people to share it. And just remember also, if you can, those of you that read the Bible, and those of you that don't, Luke Chapter sixteen, I'd like to encourage you to check out, verses nineteen through thirty-one. This is the story of the rich man Lazarus, and the rich man, you know, the beggar Lazarus was outside the rich man's gate, and, you know, just hoping to get a little bit of bread, and the rich man did nothing to help him. And that rich man went to hell for all eternity, and the beggar went to heaven. And over in the Bible, the Bible warns you about accruing wealth to the peril of your own soul. If you read James, Chapter five, also talks about that. Woe do you, rich, you know, it's a constant warning throughout the Bible. But anyways, you know, for those of you that, you know, are materialistic, know that it's hurting others around you, and, you know, that God's going to be judging people, a lot of it on the basis of how merciful they were and how forgiving they were, and how they treated the poor and those in jail, and you check out Matthew, Chapter twenty-five, it talks about that. So, you know, I encourage you to definitely read the Bible, and also, recently, I was on the Heidi Harris Show and discussed the need of the outlaw of greed. We need to outlaw that. Like in India, having too much land is actually, can be criminal, you know, and if you don't have enough kids, you can't have a certain amount of land. So a lot of the land was actually gotten, you know, in this country through robbery, slavery, that kind of thing, you know, war. And there does need to be redistribution of wealth, and unfortunately, that's not happening as quickly as many would like, but I know the Bible says that meek will inherit the earth, so those of you waiting for that kind of thing, just be encouraged that the Bible promises it. So it's just a matter of time, and obviously capitalism isn't working, so another system has to be put in place. And God is definitely going to be doing that, I'm sure, in the future, according to Revelations eighteen. A lot of information here, but just encourage you to stay, all of you in the Word, and stay away from materialism, because it can condemn you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming down. Yes, ma'am, please come up to the microphone and state your name.
Yes, my name is Augusta Gary, and I live at fourteen-twenty-one North N Street. And the reason I'm here today is I was here for this public hearing, I guess it's item fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty.
Fifty-eight, what did we do on those? Yeah, they were actually abated until March twenty-first.
That's why I want to say something.
You want to say something on those items?
Yes, my family, my husband's family came here nineteen forty-three. I've been here sixty years, and I've never been treated this way, never. Been demeaned this way. Okay, here's what it's about. They were able to withdraw without prejudice. They were able, someone put it in advance. Today, I had, it was a relative's funeral at one o'clock. I realized the relative was deceased. With this, some more gonna be deceased. So I was here to explain myself, okay? And I feel that we, the residents, if we are affected by these things, if they have the right and they can withdraw without prejudice, why is it that we come here? I'm a senior that go places, do things. I'm not a limited person. Now, I'm here. I've been sitting here for one o'clock. These people are happily somewhere else. The people have the feeling, well, no, we can't change the depth, but I can change what would happen with this. And in the future, I noticed this for March twenty-first, if I want to go someplace, I want to be notified in time that these people are going to withdraw, or you're going to put it in advance. I'm not holding Councilman Barlow responsible for this by himself. The reason why I say so, I read, well, it says staffs approve. He's not a staff by himself. So I want everybody to hear what is going on. We've seen some things happen. Most things that happened in Las, rest of Las Vegas that's bad or criminal, it was created. We are loving, church-going people, so that's my reason for being here. I missed that funeral. I said nothing could do at the funeral. I went to the wake, but I could have showed the people respect. Okay, so I'm here, and you notice I sat here because I want to go to bed tonight. I am angry, and I don't like to go to bed angry.
Well, thank you. I apologize that you had to sit through this.
Okay, but I want to, no, we want to know in time for March twenty-first, okay? I don't want to come up here and somebody say, oh, they had it in advance. Councilman Barlow has to face us, okay? But I, everyone up here is responsible, not him just by himself, and he's the only one up here to my idea, okay? So I want to know, next time, let us know it's going to be postponed. And like I said, we've been here since forty-three, fifty-two. We know all the dirty stuff about Las Vegas.
Well, thank you for coming down. I'm confident that if you stay in touch with Councilman Barlow's office.
No, I don't have, I won't come on all of you, you know, he can't do this by himself.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Yes, thank you. Todd Parlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Councilwoman Tarkanian, in reference to number fifty-six, on those, on that, on the cyclone fence that goes by the railroad tracks, you were saying that the railroad likes to have those. Are those?
I was told that. I'm not sure.
Yeah, but it does, but does the railroad put those fences in, or does the landlord, landowner? Do you know?
No, I don't. I just was able to check quickly to see if it was her responsibility.
The reason I ask is that, I never knew that, and I just wondered, does the railroad send a crew through to clean on their side of the fence? Or do they put access gates for the landlords to go on the railroad property to clean those fences up? I just wondered how that works.
Oh, who has the answer? Mr. Coffin, our historian.
I'm gonna guess. I wasn't here since the railroad was built, but when I looked at the picture, and you could see the barbed wire on the top, it looked like it was facing inwards toward the railroad property, which to me would be that the property owner was. Because of so many bums walking along the right away, makes sense.
Right, I see. I just wondered if you couldn't. The other thing I'd like to bring up, when I was coming, walking home from the planning commission meeting the other night, I looked over and Ogden Towers was all lit up, and I hope everybody some night, when you're driving around or something, drive down Stewart or walk down Stewart and look at what that looks like. It is absolutely beautiful. It just brings life into downtown. And I remember way back when, when they were putting the rendition of streamlined towers before the council, and it looks like the drawing that they had, and I mean, it is really beautiful. I hope everybody looks at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, I will close public comment. Item number seventy, Councilmember recognition, comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the City Council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. I'll start with Councilwoman Tarkanian. Do you have anything?
I will be delivering blankets donated by the community and collected at the Boho Furniture located at forty-two-twenty-one West Charleston Boulevard. They were collected at the Boho Furniture, and we are going to take them to the senior citizens in need at St. Joseph Transitional Rehabilitation Center at twenty-thirty-five West Charleston Boulevard on Thursday, January nineteenth. So if anybody wants to get us some blankets before the end of the day tomorrow, well, I guess by the end of the day today would be the last chance. But in any case, we have been collecting them, and Boho Furniture has done a tremendous job in helping. And secondly, we will be having a meeting on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, at six P M. at Hyde Park Middle School, nine-hundred Hinson, to discuss the proposed Meadows Walkable Community Plan. This plan assesses the ability of residents to walk to essential services and activities easily, safely, and comfortably, and it provides recommendations for physical improvements. And so we urge everybody to come and give us your suggestions, because this is an important thing that will be going into Ward One. The Meadows Walkable Community, six o'clock, January twenty-fifth, Hyde Park Middle School.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Barlow, do you have anything?
Yes, Mayor Protim, excuse me. First and foremost, I want to thank the mayor and council in the entire city of Las Vegas for supporting the thirtieth annual Martin Luther King Junior Parade. It was a great parade, a lot of great entries. The weather was perfect. And also, following the parade was the M L K Dream Fest, which the city of Las Vegas hosted. We had well over thirty-five hundred participants there who frequented the event from two to six. It was a great turnout. I want to thank the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, as well as the Las Vegas Detention and Enforcement, all of the city staff that participated and helped me pull this event together. It went off very, very well, and the community really enjoyed all of the entertainment, as well as the cultural vendors, food vendors, the entertainment, as well as the car, truck, and motorcycle show, and chili cook-off. And I just really want to take my hat off to Kristy Garnis and her entire staff and all the participants who assisted me in pulling this together for the thirtieth annual Martin Luther King Junior anniversary and birthday. In addition to that, on February second, every, first Thursday of every month, I host Coffee with the Councilmen. So I will be at the Starbucks located at Bonanza and Rancho, February second, from nine A M. to ten A M. So anyone in the community, from the business community, or any constituents, feel free to come on out from nine to ten and sit with me, have coffee, and discuss anything that's on your mind, or anything that you would like to share with me at my monthly Coffee with the Councilmen at Starbucks, nine A M. to ten A M., the first Thursday of every month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Councilman Coffin? Very good. Councilman Ross? Okay, thank you. I have one item. I'd like to invite everyone to join myself and Mayor Goodman for coffee with the mayor on Thursday, January twenty-sixth, from seven-thirty to nine A M. at the Omelet House, located at two-two-two-seven North Rampart Boulevard, at the corner of Rampart, Lake Mead. Myself and the mayor will be there. This is the area that this affects, the communities, this particular event affects are primarily Summerland, the Publous Vista, Sun City, Summerland, Desert Shores. But anybody can come out if you'd like to talk to myself or Mayor Goodman and have some coffee and breakfast. The Omelet House is a great restaurant. They got some great breakfast there. Rampart and Lake Mead, January twenty-sixth, from seven-thirty to nine A M. With that, the meeting's adjourned, and I'll see you all in two weeks.